Good evening.
Hi.
Yeah.
Just let me know when we're recording.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the City Council Study Session. Please forgive me if I'm not very clear. I just got back from a dental appointment, so I'm a little numb still, but I'll try to keep from biting my tongue while we're chatting. The first agenda item this evening is the monthly financial review. This is one A. Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkel is here to review the October 2017 financial report. Director Rinkel.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. So tonight, we have the October report. If you'll remember, we skipped the September report because we were in transition with the ERP. So we're back up to speed here. We've got new reporting, financials, and everything balances, ticks and ties, so we're thrilled. The revenues through October are exceeding expenditures by 3.6 million, so we're in fine financial shape on a general fund basis. Mostly are attributable to Area 7. Area 7 is still kind of our sweet spot this year. We had an average income of 627,000 per month last year in this area. For the last two months, September and October, we've had 734,000 average, so we're doing quite fine there. The revenues are better than we're expected in budget. We've collected 85.6 percent. We're 83 percent of the way through the year. And with expenditures, we're in kind of the opposite direction, which is a good thing to be with expenditures. We're at 78.9 spent and at 83 percent of the year gone. So, fine shape that way. What I'd like to do is walk quickly through the report if I can. Of course, it's a little longer report, so it won't be quite as quick as I'd like it to be. And just highlight some of the areas, since I'm sure you've read through this. If you have any questions, feel free to ask, or if you want to meet with me later at a different time and go through it in more detail, we certainly can. So on page one, what I'd like to point out is the chart on the very left. We've got the blue bar is our revenue and the red bar is our, excuse me, the blue, yeah, blue bar's revenue, the red bar is the expenditures. And you'll notice in October, we've got a sizable gap between the two. That's the 3.6 million that I spoke about earlier. You'll also see that how that compares to a five-year average, which are the lines. And in this case, we're in a very good shape with revenues. And expenditures are pretty much in line with where we've been for the last five years. The next page, what I'd like to do is highlight pretty much the 83 percent of the year complete, 87 percent of the revenue is collected. And you'll notice that our biggest area is sales and use tax, and we've collected at 87 percent through the, at this point of the year. So we're in fine shape there. The general fund expenditures, again, 78.9 percent. You'll see the breakdown by department. There is two areas I'd like to point out in the 2017 area. One is the city manager, which appears at 92.5 percent spent, when we've only gone through 83 percent of the year. And that's because what we do is we have the fire contract in that area, and that it gets paid a month in advance. So that always looks like it's higher than the spend for, or the walkthrough of the year at 83 percent. The other area is debt service, and you'll see that's at 94.6 percent. And that's because we pay most of the debt service in May, so it's paid upfront as well. The rest of the departments are in line, absolutely in line with where we should be at this point in the year. The next page, what I'd like to point out, page three, is we have the different areas and how they compare to prior year. You can see Area 7 is 1.2 million higher than it was in the prior year. I'd also like to point out the second bullet, a little farther down on the page, where what we do is we hold funds, and we are holding 1.45 million at this point, for sales tax that may have been attributed to us and belongs to other areas. And that's because of the zip code issue. Our zip codes cross some different municipalities, and sometimes we get more revenues. Now, has anyone really drawn on that money yet and said, "No, you've collected our taxes and we want them back"? No, not yet. But we do reserve for that.
When's the last time we've had a claim?
Not since I've been here, and I've been here for two years. I'd have to go back farther.
Erica, you dealt with one when you got here, right?
Yeah, Greenwood Village actually came and did an audit, and I think it was around 300,000, but I can get you an update on that, but...
Just curious. It seems like they're getting more and more irregular.
Yeah, we do meet with Centennial, Greenwood Village, and even Cherry Hills Village. Mayor Christman came from Cherry Hills Village, and we had to point out to her that she only had three commercial entities that they were gaining sales tax from in their community. And there wasn't any miscollection, so I think she understands that now.
It could be off the, I mean, use tax, depending on point of delivery. I thought there was an amount that we had agreed to, to save...
Some balance in that account.
Right. I mean, that we just agreed that we would save a certain amount.
We do.
I thought it was a lot more in the account that was under dispute for the three-year hold term than what was being listed here.
I don't, I'm not aware of anything that's under dispute at this point. We are holding 1.4...
No, I meant could potentially in the three-year term that if we have to hold it...
Right. It's 1.7 million is what we believe the risk is. We're holding...
If you believe it is, what is the total, what is the total amount in that account?
We're holding 1.45, even though the risk is a little bit larger. And at this point, like I say, that since there have been no collections, we feel comfortable with that risk.
And I think what I'm pointing out...
That's probably a lot more sometimes.
It really has been.
So I think that's why we said, at one point, we said we want to have at least this much money in there, because it was a lot more than that at one point. So I think that we had an amount that was just like, we want to hold at least 1.5 million, whatever it was, I don't remember.
Correct. And we're slightly under, I guess, what our guideline would be, but I think what I'm pointing out, too, is I think that level of risk is, you know, reducing over time as municipalities are getting better about collecting their own money and businesses are better about submitting to the correct taxing entity.
Well, we have a three-year thing on this, so...
Yes, three-year statute limitations.
I'm sure it happens, flows depending on how many auditors Greenwood Village hires and Centennial.
Agreed. Agreed. And I'm not advocating for us to reduce that. I just wanted to point out that we haven't been dealing with a lot of claims recently.
Yeah, I just thought it was more than that, but I understood her better. Thanks.
Kathleen, while we're on the subject, I'll do my best to get close to the mic here. Does the inverse ever happen, areas in which we might be due, sales tax revenue from another jurisdiction?
I'm sure there are, but I don't know of any at this point that we're contesting.
And that would only be sought out through auditing?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Yeah. Keep in mind, part of the reason why we're so, you know, on one side of this issue is because of the Inglewood mailing addresses outside of the city of Inglewood. We're relatively unique in that level of confusion as to what jurisdiction you're in. I feel like a couple times a week, I feel like one of my main jobs as the mayor, I feel like, has been to explain where the borders of Inglewood are, and who's in and who's not, and those kind of things. So it's a constant battle, I think we constantly face, due to the zip codes historically just being every zip, or every mailing address in those zip codes, 80110, 80113, you know, being defined by the federal government as Inglewood. And now, these local municipalities are getting better about getting their local residents and local businesses to change their, you know, stated mailing address.
So for example, when I bought something at American Furniture in Centennial, he insisted we were in Inglewood. And I said, "I could go for that, if you want to give us all your taxes, but you're not." And, but, and there is a three-year holding period, so that if some other entity believes that we have taken some of their money, we have three years, they have three years that they can come and contest it and potentially get it back. That's why the three-year period. After three years, too bad.
Okay. Thank you.
So on page four, the chart here represents the sources and uses that we've had of our funds. And as you can see, there, it's very stable. On page five, at the top, you can see the year-to-date revenues, year-to-date expenditures and the net revenue, or expense. And in looking at 17 versus 16, you can see in every category we've increased. The general fund revenue chart at the bottom shows the change from last year. One of the larger changes is the intergovernmental, I can't get it outright, intergovernmental revenue. And that's basically the grants that we receive. So I just wanted to let you point out that we're receiving fewer grants than we have in the past. Pages six through eight are fairly stable. They're more informational from report to report. They don't change much until we change a year. And so we'll just kind of skip through those. Page nine, we have the year-to-date comparison on a cash basis for the different areas, so you can see from year to year how they've changed. And the year-to-date in the area down below in the chart shows you Area 7 year-to-year next to each other. Let's see how large that has gotten.
Real quick, maybe I'd also like to comment on Area 2. You know, we're seeing a nice jump there, and you know, that's our Broadway corridor north of Hamden. You know, I know that one of the things we want to do is kind of reevaluate, you know, how the block party went and what the return on investment and those kind of things are. I'm encouraged to see a substantial sort of uptick in that area due to some of our activities there. Maybe this is a question, you know, were we able to gather some data regarding block party reins that we're going to be able to use to evaluate the success?
Yes and no. Some of those businesses actually file on a quarterly basis and some file monthly. So it quite plausibly, you know, could be as we look at, you know, some of these other mons, it, we hope that it keeps an uptick, but we can't be certain, because again, we have to go actually and pull every one of those businesses and see when they file.
Are we planning on doing that sometime like next year?
Yes. Actually, we're going to, when Allison Carney, I believe, is coming to see you on December 11th, and she is going to get with Jenny Nolan and work through Munirev's to look at that particular district and see if in fact she can point to a noticeable increase due to that event.
Awesome. Yeah, I feel like this is one of those rare opportunities where there is substantial economic numbers that we can show so directly, so it's really a great opportunity to gather that data.
Page 10, the chart at the top shows the 2017 versus 2016 change in the sales and use tax year-to-date. And then you've got the five-year status down below in that, in the following chart. On the next page, page 11, what's interesting is to see, well, what my favorite part of it is, I guess, is the little boxes and the line that goes through them to show the cumulative scale as to how we've done with sales and use tax. You can see through 2015 and 16. 15 grew a little bit, 16 was really flat, kind of a dip down from where we ended 15. And then we're climbing again through 17. It's looking positive. Page 12, we have the charts showing 2013 versus 2016. And you were right, Mr. Mayor, we had the alignment of the areas between 12 and 13, so we did replace the 2012 chart with 2013. And you can see the area percentages are pretty much the same from 13 to 16, with maybe a percent change here and there. On the next page, page 13, the chart at the top hasn't changed since the last package. It gives you a little historical outlook on the sales and use tax, general fund revenues. Down below, we, Councilmember Berantine had asked for a little bit more explanation on some of the charts where we'd seen either climbs or reductions over time. This one, we saw an increase due to the development, and that was, I think, the economy coming back for the licenses and permits. On page 14, the intergovernmental revenue is pretty much, again, our grants, and so they've kind of gone up and down. But the charges for services right below, you can see that we've added the explanation of the EMS services. They were contracted to Denver beginning in 15, and that's why our revenues have dropped. Down in fines and forfeitures, you'll see a similar sort of trend. The city has moved to a community policing, community policing strategy, resulting in fewer fines being issued. The amount that we budgeted for 2018 is similar to what we, the amount we budgeted for 2017. I think that was a question from the last time. On page 15, there's no change to this page other than just some historical information. Page 16, you can see how much of our expenditures at the top, our general government, which is like the CMO, the fire contract, the administration versus the police and public works, those are the direct type services we've got there for the residents. On page 17, you have a historical summary by department, so you can see year-to-year how the departments have fared, how much they spend. Page 18, the top chart is a year-to-date look at expenditures by major line items, and then the graph down below is the same data in a picture format. Page 19, transfers are always a question. Now, these transfers for the 117,000 is the Public Improvement Fund. What we do is we pay debt service out of one fund and expect reimbursement from them. So that's what we do, is we transfer in the money as the reimbursement. The next page at the top has a very nice chart of what's happened with our general fund balance. You can see for 17, we thought the fund balance would drop a little with how we needed to cover our expenditures. We have to make sure that we have our 16.67 percent reserves to cover expenditures or revenues, however you want to look at that. Typically, it's built off the revenues. And with our 2017 estimate, it looks like we're going to come in at 22 percent. So looking healthy on a fund balance basis. Page 21 is the summary of the Public Improvement Fund. It shows that we're on target for receipts. And in the lower chart, you can see where we get our receipts from. It's the vehicle use tax, the building tax, and the Rappahoe County road tax. Page 22 is the summary by fund. It shows the year-to-date status with our beginning fund balance, where, what we've spent year-to-date, what we've received year-to-date, and where we expect to end the balance at this point. You will see down towards the bottom, the employee benefits. It appears that the ending balance will be negative, and that is not true. What we do is we pay a month in advance on our medical insurance there. As we get to December, there are no expenses, because we've booked them ahead of time, so you will see that come right back into line. And that's it. Any questions?
Questions or comments from Council? Councilmember Berantine.
On the debt service, are any of those done quarterly? I mean, on your last one, for the general fund comparative revenue expenditures and fund balance report, it's got us listed as, or is it again? Debt service is already at 94.6 percent of the budget. Was there something we missed or something different there? Or is it just quarterly? Or are we not going to make another payment in December?
No, it's at 94 percent, because what we do is we pay most of it in May, so it's paid forward earlier in the year.
Oh, so it's just going...
Yeah, it's just a timing issue.
Okay. So that's more than likely not going to continue to change anymore.
No, we will make a small payment, I think, in December, November or December on some of them, but that's it.
And then on the, the property tax, I can't remember, do we, when do we receive our payments from property tax? I know we don't get it all at one time, but I can't remember when the other payments are made. Do they do that month? Do they do it quarterly?
I know we pay them by April, so most of it we get, I think, by May. May and June is our big bulk of sales tax.
So it's kind of cut into two payments.
And then we see a little bit more towards the October, November, but most of it gets paid early on.
Okay. And, wow, city manager, ouch.
That's the fire contract.
But we have one more, do we have one more payment to make before the end of the year?
Yes, we do. We pay it in November. We won't pay one in December.
We'll pay it in November. Is that going to put him over?
No, at this point, it doesn't look like it.
He's going to be okay? All right, just...
Could be okay.
Squeak him by there. But I know it's a fire contract, and I just wanted to know when the rest of that one goes in, so, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That clarifies mine as well. I saw the big jump from 15 to 16, but the city manager absorbing the fire budget makes sense there. Thank you.
And you can look a little farther down the list, and you'll see that where we've got the fire department, and it goes to zero.
Or he's cleverly hiding something. Who knows?
Councilmember Russell.
So, I do have a question. When I was reading, I think it was the non-emergency retirement board meeting, there was something in there about an unfunded liability. Do we have unfunded liabilities in more than just the non-emergency employee board? What about fire and police?
Well, we don't manage those accounts. We contribute to them, but we don't manage those. But you will find across companies and cities that most retirement plans carry an unfunded liability, and they have a plan for reaching funding. And I think ours is a 10-year plan to reach fully funded.
Okay, but is that unfunded liability, or is that under employee benefits, what the non-emergency?
No.
Okay.
Because we contribute to it. That ends up being in our budget, and we make the contributions we're supposed to by plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep in mind, we also have an old plan for old hires, for pension, for...
Did we lose her?
Should I answer that? Linda, are you there?
Yeah, they brought a new phone. Does this work?
It sounds a lot better.
Okay. Help you the Bluetooth phone, not an American phone.
Sorry, I forgot what I was saying. Oh, the old hire and new hire plans. Don't forget about those pension plans are still out there. However, you know, as these folks are getting older, the liability for the city is dwindling.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the monthly financial review? Okay, seeing done, I'll move us on to our second agenda item. This is board and commission reapportment discussion. City Council's going to discuss the reapportment of board and commission members. Now, this is folks who are reapplying, who have reapplied, have, you know, and here in our packet, we have some information about their application, their letter of intent. I guess that's more like a recommendation letter, right, from the chair? And then, of course, their attendance record. So perhaps easier way to go about this might be to, you know, open up some comments if folks are concerned about one of these reapportments. Councilmember Berantine?
On the heels of the citizen initiative, going ahead and putting term limits on the board and commission members so that more people could go ahead and serve, the conversation has come up about people serving on multiple boards. And we do not have a consistent application of that. We have had people who have given up their position on a board. We have had people who have not been appointed to a second board, and yet we continue to have people who serve on more than one board. So, I mean, I can understand, especially there are some unique situations where boards are, where there are some positions that are recommended by another entity. I believe so one of the pension ones is the Mali Center. You have to be recommended by Parks and Rec. I think those are some exceptions that we have to those. But for the most part, we need to make sure that we come in and are consistent with it, so it doesn't look like we think some people are more worthy or not worthy, or some positions are not as easy to fill, then, I mean, then we need to make sure that we're doing the job to make sure that we get out there and get that taken care of. But for the most part, we turn people away. For the entire two years that I've been back on council, we've turned people away and not appointed people at every time that we've done an appointment. So what I'm looking for is some consistency in this. And one of them unfortunately is going to have the discussion with former Mayor Woodward, who I greatly appreciate his service and his, his level of knowledge, but we have to make sure that we have some consistency so that we're not treating ex-council people either, ex-mayors, as if, I mean, so we have to have a consistent policy regardless of who it is, no matter how much I like them.
And, you know, I think, you know, we probably don't have a clear policy that prohibits multiple board service. I think this body has discussed the possibility of not appointing people to multiple boards with the idea of, hey, let's, you know, give more opportunities for service to the general public. That being said, is there any other member here that anybody's aware of that's serving on another board or commission? Is this issue extended beyond Mr. Woodward, or is it simply related to him?
Actually, at this point, because John Moore was, gave up one of his boards, he gave up the Budget Advisory Committee for that very reason.
He was, he was on Water Sewer, and I know he's on the pension. I would suggest that he's probably still on multiple bodies.
Multiple pensions.
I think Mr. Kohn, maybe? I don't know.
No.
You know, is he just doing election? I was thinking maybe he was still on Code or some others.
No.
Ha. So, you know, that being said, maybe it's limited to Mr. Moore and Mr. Woodward. You know, we could discuss those potential reapportments. I know historically, we've struggled, you know, with some of the pension bodies, you know, and I know that's, you know, something that this body has discussed. Do others want to comment on this, on, you know, suppo, giving direction or consensus on whether or not we want to appoint someone, knowing that they're sitting on another body?
Along with, if I might just add the other comment, though we have also stopped, I just, I think I mentioned it, but I want to reiterate it, that we have also not appointed people who wanted to get on a second board by using that policy. So when you only have two people, and you've kind of exercised these things with different people, it does look inconsistent and...
Yeah, and I'll say again, or reiterate again, I don't think there's a policy in place. I think it was the subjective decision of council not to place somebody on a second board or commission. And again, I think that's kind of where we're at today. But I do think we could begin a discussion about a more formalized policy.
That's my concern for where it's subjective and it's not consistent, and we open ourselves up to that, why it's subjective and not consistent.
Thank you. I'd like to go to Councilmember Martinez, then Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. I think the only time that we've made exceptions is when we've had maybe a lack of quorum for not allowing somebody to be on two, is my recollection. I'm fine with people serving on one. I know we've had other members say, "I will choose one," and they choose one, and it hasn't been an issue. But I know with some boards and commissions, like has been mentioned, we have a hard time finding people who want to serve on those. So I think we need to make kind of some considerations with those, to leave those boards fully, fully staffed.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Actually, I, I think that, in all fairness, for the two years that we have been on, we have been encouraging people to step down if they're on more than one board, and most people have complied with that. I, I do think we probably ought to have the discussion on the retirement boards, maybe a little bit different, because they, we might not have many applicants for that, and you need somebody qualified to do that. So I think that we could perhaps separate that out. I'm not necessarily about choosing for an individual which board that they want to be on. And so perhaps in the case of Mr. Woodward being reappointed to Parks and Rec, he may choose to stay on that board, but we should give him the option of perhaps stepping down. Now, I also know that he's on the Mali Center Trust Fund Board, but he, the Parks and Rec Commission also appoints, not just that, do they have to recommend, one of the members has to be a member of the Mali Center Trust Fund Board. So in that case...
Is he in fact that member, do you know?
Yes. He in fact is that member. And so in that case, I believe if he stays on Parks and Rec, it would be okay for him to be on the Mali Center Trust Fund Board. But I think there's a couple other boards that he's on that perhaps, you know, he needs to require. Now, is one of them a pension board? So I mean, that might be a possibility.
Urban renewal.
Well, he's on urban renewal, but the... Well, he's on urban renewal, but he's also on a pension board. So, my suggestion is...
Others want to weigh in?
Well, she brings up a good point. I mean, by design, you would have at least one person who would serve on two boards.
Correct.
Because of the way the board is set up.
Heard her.
Yeah, because they have to be part of that membership. So, but I think some of the pension boards have some pretty specific requirements on who's all members of that. So, I would agree that we might want to take a look at that one.
You know, so I'm hearing that, you know, we might want to give some members the option of sort of choosing. It sounds like I heard also that we have some concerns about making sure we've got people for pension bodies, you know. So, maybe the idea, unless others have strong opinions, might be that, you know, besides Malle and besides pension, that we would prefer people to choose one or the other. Is that a fair statement?
Not one or the other of those. I mean, if they wanted to serve...
Of their remaining...
Right. Yeah, I think you just picked out what you meant.
Does anybody have any objection to that? Maybe is a better way to state that?
How is a preference exercise, though?
So, basically, my suggestion would be we would go back to this person and say, hey, you know, council, you know, doesn't feel comfortable making multiple appointments. Please choose which body you would feel most comfortable holding on to and then resigning from the others, I guess would be the request.
In all fairness, just to kind of catch you up, what we did previously was that if people were already serving on boards and we were kind of going this way, we just didn't want to kick people off. So, it's as their appointment has been coming up to go ahead and let them choose. So, Kate Townley was on both the Parks and Rec, I mean, sorry, Parks and Rec, Urban Renewal Authority and the Planning and Zoning. And that's kind of somewhat how this issue came up is because not only do those two boards have some interaction that could create, because the one is a body politic on its own that could create some conflict of interest. And so, the discussion kind of started. And at that time, since she just happened to be up for both at the same time, it was weird. So, she ended up choosing. We allowed her to choose which board she really wanted to be reappointed to.
And I think part of that conversation was the fact that we view planning and zoning as a quasi judicial function as well. And so, you know, very clearly, if you're on a quasi judicial, you shouldn't be on multiple. And I think that's current policy. And so, that was an extra layer of issues.
But we allowed him to pick. And then John Moore was allowed to pick which board he wanted to stay on, whether it was the Budget Advisory Committee. So, so far, when this has happened, we have allowed the person to choose.
And in each case, they just picked one and moved on.
So far?
So far, yeah. Haven't had any major objections. You know, I suspect, yeah, go ahead, Linda.
Sorry. It's a little hard when Councilmember Berentine, when you are going back and forth between the two of you. If one of you could talk to them, that'd be helpful. But I know it's hard for me on this end. But my understanding of what we did the last two years was that at least two members felt very strongly that people not serve on more than one board. We didn't all agree on that, but we did all agree on that you could not serve on a quasi judicial board and another one, that you had to pick between that. You could not, you had to only serve on a quasi judicial board if that's what you chose. And then you would resign from the other. So, you could pick if you didn't want to do that. So, I would stay with that. I would say that also, if we've changed a policy at this late date when we've asked people to reapply or be reappointed and ask for respect from chairs, that we ought to take this up at the June meeting instead of this awkward time to be telling people, oh, by the way, you can't only serve on one now. That is not what we all agreed to. We've had disagreements on it. I think we just need to have a conversation. What are we going to do going forward? But let's not pull the rug out of people now.
Yeah. So, Linda, is your preference, is your preference then at this time, just to move forward with these appointments and discuss this policy a little more in depth at a later date?
Right. And make sure the quasi judicials are secure with only one appointment.
Yeah.
With no other nursing commissions. That's clear. Then let's take this up together to think, okay, there are times when it's helpful to have someone on more than one. And I would always like to have that opportunity. And it should not be based on personality. It should be based on what the needs are and what the person brings to the table in terms of their expertise. And that's often been the pension type boards.
Yeah. Going back real quick, maybe I'll restate what I think are, you know, I don't know that we have a written policy on this. You know, I was kind of thinking about that. But I know we had clear consensus and that has been, you know, how we've reacted in relation to the quasi judicial appointments. So, we've heard an alternate here, alternate idea saying, you know, let's just move forward with these appointments as is. Does anybody support that?
I have another, I have a question about...
Go ahead. Councilmember Berentine?
Right now, as it sits, because we have asked people not, I mean, we have taken them from being appointed to more boards, right now, as it sits, how many boards and commissions do we have altogether? Twenty six? I don't know. Some...
Quick count.
Twenty fifteen.
Not that many.
As it sits now, we only have two people that serve on more than one. So, I think that that's, makes it kind of difficult in itself that we're only talking about two people. Second, one of those two people already sits on a quasi judicial board, the Urban Renewal Authority. So, the Urban Renewal Authority is a body politic, a governmental entity unto itself, and it is separate from this council. And that is considered, I mean, once we appoint them, we have no authority over what their decisions are, what they do, neither with their money or their funding or their ability to do a lot of things that actually council can't even do. So, if we were, if we're sticking with that, then we would still need to ask former Mayor Woodward to choose.
Thank you. Councilmember Costa?
Hey, that's what I was curious about. It was just being referred to.
Mind using this mic? In these study sessions, we got to try to use these mics for the streaming...
This person is Mr. Woodward that we're discussing. I just kept hearing reference to a person. That is Mr. Woodward.
Yes. Yep. Mr. Jim Woodward.
And he's currently sitting on Parks and Rec.
Yes, as well as...
Urban renewal.
Which is quasi judicial.
Malle Center, yeah.
Yes, Urban renewal.
Urban renewal is considered, as Councilmember Berentine has mentioned, a separate body politic that could have a quasi judicial role from time to time, specifically setting up new areas.
Now, Mayor Jefferson, I believe in you initially described it was a policy and then, well, maybe it was just a formal consensus. But it has happened. We're here where there wasn't that much of a consensus because Mr. Woodward is in that position. Or he's sitting on a quasi judicial board and another.
Yeah, keep in mind, as Councilmember Berentine kind of pointed out, I think we've been dealing with this on, over the last year or two, on the reappointment basis. And again, my suggestion has been that, you know, we've always handled this on a subjective sort of level, on the council level. And how we came to that decision or who, you know, how we kind of discussed that, I think has changed a little bit. And so, I'm not so sure this is a written policy. And that's what I was going back and clarifying. I think we had clear consensus on that issue. And I think that may be written somewhere, you know.
Mayor, just as a point of clarification, we did, as staff, put forward a board and commission policy that did contain the elements that were described. However, that particular policy never was adopted. It was very large. We were trying to draw all the resources and put them into one place. And that policy is still being reconstituted as we speak to bring forward at a date yet to be determined.
Along with our other policy issues.
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
I think that, you know, I understand that a different time would be a great time to talk about it. But the only time it comes up is when the reappointments are here. And so, I think this is a great time to talk about it. I think, one thing, that if we are moving forward with this to, for a person to choose, that, and I mean, okay, first of all, there are 22 boards and commissions. And for only two people to be serving on that, ever since we happen to be in the last two years on council, there have been a lot of interviews for boards and commissions. And I think it has kind of expanded it to have more influence in the community. And so, I think that, you know, we really should consider this. I agree that we should talk about some of these policies, especially about the pension boards. But other than that, I think that we could move forward. And I just, I would like, if we're giving that option for somebody to choose to resign from other boards in order to maintain this board, that we would move forward quickly so we know what openings are available before the deadline.
Yeah. I think I'm hearing consensus emerging suggesting that, you know, correct me if I'm wrong here, but that we'd like to ask Mr. Woodward to make a selection, you know, within the next, by the next week, so that we had some direction on this appointment, reappointment issue. It sounds to me like people don't have a problem with John Moore on the non-emergency pension board, given its, you know, pension nature is kind of what I'm hearing. You know, that being said, I'm going to suggest, I'm going to suggest that's the consensus, is that, you know, we're asking people not to apply to multiple boards, but it doesn't necessarily apply to pension bodies or the Malle.
And actually, John Moore is also on Water and Sewer besides the pension board. And, okay, he's applying for the pension board.
And we're comfortable with that, is what we're saying.
Yes.
Because one pension, one non-pension.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments on this? I'm going to suggest we have consensus to move forward. You got that?
Yeah. Mayor, just as I can clarify, so Mr. Woodward is going to have to choose whether he's going to continue either Parks and Rec. He's on URA, he's on NERP, and he's on Malle Center Trust. But Parks and Rec and Malle Center go together because of the appointment process. So, he's going to have to make a selection of either continuing with URA or, do you still want him on NERP?
What's NERP?
NERP.
Non-emergency retirement, sorry. Non-emergency retirement.
That's the pension that we just talked about.
My apologies. I...
You said it so fast. I was like, wow, we got a 23rd board now.
Yeah, no, we, it's non-emergency retirement. Sorry.
No, no problem. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Exactly as you stated, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, great. I'm going to move us on to the next agenda item. This is agenda item three. This is District One vacancy filling process discussion. We're going to discuss the upcoming vacancy of District One. Do we have a staff source for this? Do you want to kick us off, Mr. Keck?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, this particular item, obviously is before you. As discussed and directed by the council last week, we did open up the recruitment process and we've received one application so far for the District One vacancy that will come up with Mayor Jefferson's exitus here on January 8th. So, that process has been open and it's open until January 8th. We just tagged it as open until that particular date. So, I think at this point in time, what we want to obtain from council is kind of a commitment to a schedule. I know it's way out there. It seems like it's way out there for interviews. The complexity of this item obviously happens when we're also going to be interviewing for the February board and commission appointments. And so, the January 8th study session was already set aside for beginning interviews for board and commissions. And we're uncertain at this point in time how many people are going to apply. We've got several right now, but I don't know if it's going to be like last time where we had 39 applicants, which was fantastic. But that puts the pressure on the council, obviously, to commit to additional meeting nights and additional meeting times. To further throw complexity into this, we also have the opportunity to have the council participate in the swearing in of the new judge on the 8th as well. And so, that's probably somewhere between a 30 and a 45 minute period of time. But that's something that the council should be aware of as well. So, at this point, I think though, specifically as we're talking on this particular item, we want to kind of have an understanding of, again, time to set aside for the interviews for the District One replacement. And again, not knowing beyond the one individual who's currently applied, how many you're going to have. So, that's the introduction.
Thank you. I'll add a couple of comments here. I think I'd like to start with, you know, basic feedback on, you know, application or any logistics as far as the application process itself, given the city manager's report there. And then secondarily, I think I'd like to lead us on to special meeting dates and times and all that kind of issue. And as the city manager just mentioned, you know, the 8th and what we're going to do for that. We can kind of get into that more generally. Does anybody have any issues or concerns or comments regarding what the city manager just generally laid out as far as the application process and dates, deadlines, those kind of things? Hearing no major objection, I'll move us on to the scheduling portion. And my initial thought was that we would need multiple special meetings in the week of the 8th. So, normally, I would say that, you know, city council would need at least one special meeting to get through the board and commission appointment process. And now, with the District One interviews, I would suggest that you need at least two. And I know that's a little tight. And so, you know, I guess the question for the council is, you know, would we be okay with scheduling multiple special meetings the week of the 8th? Yes, the week of the 8th. The only way I feel like we could buy a little bit more time is if, and this has been a little bit complicated, we talked about this a little bit today, but we put the deadline as January 8th. You know, one of the ideas I had was, hey, if I resigned on the 2nd and you felt like you couldn't do interviews until I left, that could buy a few more days for the council. You know, having said that, we've already kind of put out this deadline. And so, maybe that opportunity has passed. I feel like that's kind of up to the council perhaps. But, you know, that's an idea. And then, going back to the 8th, my idea for the 8th is a special meeting either prior to the study session or during some sort of break in the study session whereby council could participate in the swearing in of the judge and we'd have a little reception. And then you guys could move back into interviews. Does anybody have any major problems with that? I guess, let's just start there. Is anybody going on vacation that week or anything like that? I mean, do we know any major objections? Scheduling conflicts as far as being able to do multiple special meetings? Seeing nobody kind of objecting or running out of the room. Councilmember Berentine?
I think if we have, if we're blessed enough to have a lot of applications like we did last time, I think we ought to just have it scheduled for that week to do two or three. Just schedule them. And if we have it for interviews for the boards and commissions, fine, if we need to use that. But we need to be ahead of time to go ahead and understand that we're looking at that process at that time. I mean, so I would just set aside the time and go, we're going to be meeting for one thing or another. And if we don't need to, it's way easier to cancel than create.
So, in my mind, that leaves us the 8th, the 9th, the 10th, and the 11th. You know, it's possible dates to block out or check your calendar for...
And as it was just for the boards and commissions, we really should have moved that to three nights. I mean, I think that that becomes a very rushed kind of process and nobody wants to deal with us after 9 o'clock like that.
Yeah, fair enough.
So, if we could just block it out and have that, that we're already going to do that, I think that would be better. But like I said, way easier to cancel. You can always cancel one for me. I'll let you.
Does anybody have any major scheduling conflicts the week of the 8th? So, we're basically talking Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday nights of that week.
Mayor, what time do those usually begin? I see many evenings.
Yeah, I mean, historically, we've done 6:00, but we've done 5:30 when we've tried to schedule multiple. So, I would suggest that we could to try to do a 5:30, just so that you guys can get as much time in on those meetings as possible.
And then, with the understanding that we try to do a deadline, both for the citizens, the community, whether they're applying...
Oh, yeah.
Whether they're applying for, to be respectful of their time, that we're not interviewing people at 9:30 and 10 o'clock.
Yeah. So, we're not trying to do any reviews after 9:00 PM is kind of what we've generally got some consensus on. Councilmember Martinez?
I was going to say the same thing. If we could schedule it not after 9 o'clock, I think that would be, we would get the best interview out of the candidates and they would get the best questions out of us. And is there any, what's the scheduling conflict with doing like maybe the District One interviews that week and then the board and commission meetings the following week? Is it because of the, we need two meetings before February? Okay.
Well, and when are the applications due for the boards and commissions? Could we do those the week of the 1st?
I think it was December 30th or something like that?
Yeah. Right at the end of the year, I remember thinking, so maybe we could do some board and commission interviews the week of the 1st, if that's a preference of the council, and break these up so it's not four days in a row.
And that works for me. And there are a lot of board and commission meetings during those first two weeks of the month.
Yes.
So, if we do that, just know that we will all miss those. And possibly, since we're not re-interviewing the folks who are reapplying, I think that will be good for those folks. But my concern is, I guess, when, we may have some folks who apply for the District One position that are on boards and commissions. So, I wouldn't want to kind of disrupt that either.
Yeah. So, you know, I'm hearing that possibility of interviewing candidates that week of the 1st. Does anybody have any preference of that, of breaking up, you know, some of these who are not meeting four days in a row?
I can't find my phone. What is the, when does the 1st happen?
So, the 1st is the Monday.
Oh, thank you.
So, we have our meeting on the 2nd, January 2nd.
Okay, so that's a Monday. So, it would be the 2nd.
So, we're already meeting on the 2nd. So, for that week, we've got Wednesday, the 3rd, Thursday, the 4th, and Friday, the 5th as possibilities, unless we wanted to do a weekend, you know, it's all sorts of options.
So, I'm glad to hear that you need the first week of January.
So I, I'm glad to hear that you need the first week of January. I think I'd asked before if we have them in time for the Boards and Commissions, that that would be a better use of our time rather than packing it all into the following week. I can do any of the nights, any of those, but I think it might be clearer for our minds if we can start a little bit earlier for Boards and Commissions to get them out of the way. The 8th, we can't do interviews for District One because they will have just come in, so they don't want to have enough time. So we do need to probably do those the 9th, 10th, and 11th. I suggest that we do a couple of the Boards and Commissions nights the first week, and then on the 8th, maybe we start at 5:30, and at 9, now allow us for three 10-minute breaks in a three-hour period to give some breathing space.
Thank you. Manager Keck has some comments. Oh, go ahead, Linda, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there.
Yeah, and the other piece that maybe we can talk about would be whether or not, how we're going to, what the timing will be for the District One, how much time do we want to interview each one of those? Because that will help us to set the time. I don't really know what we all want to do yet.
Yeah, so maybe that's a...
Won't they be contingent on how many applications we have?
Yeah, and so perhaps that's something that can be discussed on the 8th, you know, as far as how, we'll set that aside. But certainly, I think we all know, we want more time with the District One person than we want with some of the Board and Commission appointees. And so, you know, just shooting from the cuff, you know, half an hour each, something like that, you know what I mean?
We'll leave, we'll give them a half hour.
Yep. City Manager Keck?
Mayor, I just pulled up the calendar of events, so to speak, for what was put on our website for Boards and Commissions. And Board and Commission application deadline, applications are due December 29th. However, it did stipulate that we were going to do interviews on the 8th, 8th through the 10th. We can change that. Obviously, we can reach back out to those folks and make sure that they're still available. Or I want to get the council's feel on this.
Yeah, I don't think that's a huge problem, honestly. I think if you, you know, schedule people when it's convenient for them, you know, give them some of the options to choose from, I don't think that'll be a problem.
Don't we need some time to read it?
You do.
I mean, we do need some time to read the applications.
Well, New Year's Day, I mean...
Plenty of time. Councilmember Martinez?
You're putting a strain on yourself. Just make sure that staff has the opportunity to go ahead and make sure that all of those things are put together too. And I think that's kind of a little unfair for staff.
Best we can.
Not that they don't want to visit me on New Year's Day and deliver, you know, really.
They'll deliver it. Previous week. Councilmember Martinez?
I just wanted to ask one additional question about the District One seat, our process for that. I know with the Boards and Commissions, we agreed upon kind of a list of questions that we would ask the Board and Commission members. Are we going to also do that for the District One candidates? So we're not asking all kinds of all-over-the-place questions, or is it just going to be freestyle?
That's a great question, and maybe that's something for discussion. Again, you know, I'd suggest that some of those questions that we use for Board and Commissions would probably have some decent crossover, and perhaps we could pick that up. But, you know, I would suggest that it's probably going to be more freestyle. But again, I think this is a great question for this body to kind of wrestle with. So if anybody's got any strong opinions on either of those issues, the timing, the questions that are asked, those kind of things, I suppose we can get into that. Councilmember Berentone?
In the past, having gone through two of them, quite honestly, it's so dependent on the person that's coming that you need to, because they bring up a lot of issues when they give their little spiel. And I think that that's important, is that they have an opportunity to start it off, like any kind of good interview, where they give their information on what they think, why they want it, you know, anything they want to say. And then that really spurs the kind of follow-up questions. So if you have, if you had too many rote questions on there, it might be so far afield from anything that they brought up, that, so it is a little bit more freestyle. But we always allowed the person the opportunity to come in and kind of give their elevator speech, or however you want to phrase that.
Thank you.
What would you think of that? Do you think that would work?
I think it would, although I think the Board and Commission roles are quite a bit different than a council member role. So I think we should, we should talk about it and see what the majority of council feels comfortable with. I'm okay either way. I don't want to just not allow us to ask questions outside of what we're all comfortable asking. But I don't also want it to be vastly different for each candidate that we are interviewing.
And I do have to agree, it ends up being as vastly different as the candidates are. So it is a little bit more difficult to do, I have to admit.
And keep in mind, I think for Boards and Commissions, we have like seven questions that we've, you know, typically been picking from. And so perhaps for these Board, or for the District One rep, there's two or three that are sort of standardized, and then it kind of free flows from there. Councilmember Wink?
I appreciate Councilmember Berentone's comment about tending some of the questions to the particularities of some of the candidates. However, I do feel very strongly that maybe there's a way we can balance this. I feel strongly that we absolutely should have some consistency for measurement's sake, for our ability to evaluate fairly and justly, that we do standardize some of the questions. If we're having half an hour meetings or interview slots, then of course, it gets a little tricky timewise. But I'd definitely like to move for the consistency.
You know, in my mind, you know, two of the, you know, more popular questions in the Board and Commissions really makes sense of, why do you want to serve? And what was the other one? What do you, you know, what do you love about Inglewood? You know, I loved, you know, asking all of those questions of our applicants. So, you know, maybe this is something that we can delve a little bit more into as we get a little bit closer and say, hey, of these questions, you know, which of these can we agree upon to sort of standardize and make sure that we ask every candidate without making that list too long, where it dominates the entire interview? And that way, there is sort of that level of standardization versus that level of freestyle that needs to happen based on the different applicants. Councilmember Wink?
So at what point do these questions get finalized? Who, what's the process for this, and who's involved?
Mayor, I'm happy to send out questions that the council can look at. And then as a group, we'll have to schedule another time for you to meet or put this at the end of an agenda where you can say, hey, I reviewed all the questions that were provided from staff, and these are the ones we think we should ask, and you figure that out. But we'll provide you some questions, and they come from, as the mayor indicated, those are the top two questions. But there's some others about what types of skills and things would you bring to the council to help, you know, move the community forward and help with governance. So we'll provide you with some questions from Human Resources.
Thank you, Manager Keck.
And I will say, the interview process in and of itself has not been super formalized as far as the structure. I think, you know, it has been just kind of a discussion amongst council of, hey, here's some of the questions. And when it comes to your turn, you can either ask a question on this list, or you can ask a different question. Councilmember Questa?
Sure. Thank you. I do appreciate striking that balance. So we're talking about a half an hour interview for each District One candidate?
I was just throwing that out there as a possibility.
Gotcha. We'll have to see how it goes, of course, and yes, I'm new to this myself. But a two-year term for city council seems to be a lot to pack into a half an hour. And I know that we'll have their interviews to, or excuse me, their applications to review as well, but...
Yeah, you think we need more time? I mean, I'm open to hearing that. We have 45 minutes?
It's a quick way to a council seat, I would say. 30 minutes in front of us in an interview, so...
Yep, takes a half hour to turn it up to the machines.
Are you saying it took you a lot longer than that?
A little bit, a little bit. So I need to say, I'm new to such a process as well, and I'm looking forward to the mechanics of it. But it definitely seems like, I feel like there's only so much substance you can get out of such a small period of time for such a valuable role that lasts for such a great length of time.
And I think that's totally fair. I guess in my mind, I'm thinking, you know, on the lower end, I think if we've got time to spend with these folks, I agree, that'd be time well invested. Again, I think, depending on how many applicants we get, if we get a handful, you know, we're going to be able to spend a ton of time with these folks. If we get 25 applicants, you know what I mean, then it looks a little bit different logistically. Councilmember Berentone?
And don't forget that the interview process is public, too. So you can always get some feedback. And we don't vote that night, I mean...
I think it's Council... Yep, Councilmember Olson, then Councilmember Martinez.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
I don't know whether you could hear it.
Yeah, no, you gotta keep...
Appreciate Councilmember Questa's response. I would like an hour. And if we've got, you know, 10 candidates, perhaps we do take one evening to sort through our top ones and start with those. I don't, I don't know. But I do think we need more than, I mean, a half hour would be, I just, Doc said we've got at least a half hour, but I would like an hour. And if it doesn't go the full time, that's fine with me. But I do think we need to set up some questions. I like a hybrid where, and we've kind of been doing this on Boards and Commissions already, where we have some preset questions that are traditionally asked, and then we hear from those in order to get deeper in, because some people answer them before you even ask them. And that will happen, I'm sure, with council member applications as well. They're going to start telling us things that a question would probably be asked in anyway, so let's go deeper.
Thank you.
I do think we need to agree with you, and I like the sense that Councilmember Wink suggested that some sort of criteria and strategies for this, that we're being really fair. And of course, it should be very public, and so we want it to be fair and not just look fair, but be fair. So everybody's being asked similar things and has the same chance to show their best thinking.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
To add on to that a little bit, I was thinking, so we have kind of an application for District One, which is similar to the application we have for Boards and Commissions. And with some applicants, we get a lot of information, so we don't need to ask all the questions that we have in mind. But in others, we get basically no information, and that could be the same with our District One applicants as well. So I don't know if we need to, if we would like to add any additional questions here or make sure that all of these are required for them to fill out, but just to kind of help us get as much information upfront as we can from the applicants.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone?
I really appreciate the way that this discussion is going. And I think it might be fairer to the applicants if we come up with some questions that we think would be important for this process, that we publish them and that they're aware of them prior to them coming. Why shouldn't they know what we think is an important question so that they could go ahead and be prepared and have some opportunity to look at the answers? I mean, nobody's going to know if somebody off the top of their head asks some other question based on something they've said. There's always going to be that. There's that during the Boards and Commissions. We can't, we don't stop that. But I think if we really want to be fair and upfront and give everybody that even chance that Councilmember Wink is looking for, then I think maybe we should just publish it. I don't see any problem with that.
That's good for the public, too.
Absolutely. So, and if they have it ahead of time and they have the chance to prepare, then, and they give a great answer, then that's good. They can, maybe that's, you go, wow, they can research and do their stuff. And if they have it ahead of time and aren't prepared and can't answer it, then maybe that's a little bit justice-telling. So I don't think there's any problem with going ahead and publishing those questions.
Yeah, I think I'm hearing a couple of members sort of supporting the idea of putting a couple of questions either distributed to the applicants later or as part of the application itself. Basically, we have one open-ended narrative question. Please provide a brief statement indicating why you're interested in serving on the city council, and what issues do you consider most important to move Inglewood into the future is the one open-ended question. Now, Councilmember Russell?
Actually, I appreciate the discussion also, and I do agree that it probably would be good to make the questions available to the public. And it could be that the public that's checking in, maybe they have questions that they would like to know also, because ultimately, the person that's chosen is going to represent the public, especially in that district.
Thank you. Yeah, it sounds like Manager Keck is going to... Go ahead, Councilmember Olson.
I would agree. I'm totally supportive of having public questions. I think this is not just our decision. You know, people have to feel good about who they're being represented by, although we're not, we don't have a way to get that. But I think it should at least be that everyone had a fair chance, had a fair amount of time to prepare, to think through what they're doing. And good interviews are like that anyway. When I do professional interviews, I send all my questions to candidates ahead of time, and then you ask others too. But I think it does show, like Councilmember Berentone said, and see if they prepared or not. And if they don't take it seriously, then perhaps it will be hard for them to do all the packet reading and being ready on a Monday night. But I think it'll be helpful. And of course, you can ask a lot of questions like that, so I'm supportive of that, figuring out what those questions are. Hopefully, it will be easy if Eric has a good chunk of them he can send our way.
Yes, I'll suggest that Manager Keck send some, you know, list of questions for us to consider, and that, you know, this body try to gain consensus on a few of those questions to be able to kind of standardize some of this process. It sounds like we're wanting to put those out to the public. I guess my question for this body is, again, with this kind of fairness question, is do we want to amend the application? We already have one applicant. Do we want to simply distribute this list to all of the applicants on a date certain? That way, you know, it gets disseminated all at the same time. Councilmember Berentone?
Yeah, I already had it up before you asked that question, but...
Please address the question.
Could you, could you, don't start. Could you include maybe, or consider some of the questions like what was asked in the paper of the candidates? We might want to take a look at some of those kind of questions as well. And as far as the, that'd make you feel better, Councilmember Questa, they got to answer those, too. And then I think giving them after we know all the applicants, I don't think there's a problem with giving it to them at that, at that time. Or once we make it public, you know, notifying anybody who's applied, but we do want to give them a little bit of time.
Manager Keck?
Mayor, I think we can, we can do that very thing. And I think it's easy for us to just amend the site that people apply upon, to actually include those questions as a separate link that they can open up once this body determines what those questions are.
Okay. And just the one applicant will probably need some sort of special notification that something has changed on the application itself. Other questions or comments regarding District One vacancy?
Have you firmly put the date before interviewing?
No. And so now we'll come back around to that. You know, again, I didn't hear anybody saying they couldn't do a night between the 9th and 11th. I think there is some opportunity on the week of the 2nd. Keep in mind, the 1st is the holiday, the 2nd is the meeting night. So that leaves us in my mind Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of that week as possible dates. Does anybody have any preference as far as which dates are held, or even that weekend possibility, the 6th and the 7th? Does anybody have any preference of which days of the week?
And will we get the applications?
He just told us, what was it, December 29th?
That's the deadline.
Yes.
Boards and Commissions.
Yes. And so...
I think that we can probably get you those on the 2nd. I mean, that's the best that we can do, would be to make sure that they get to you in a, we'll bring them to that meeting and say, here you go, unless there's people who aren't, see, supplying.
Well, the normal packet distribution would be on the 4th.
Sure. Yeah, we can do that, too. That's an excellent suggestion, is whatever we get prior to the end of the year, we can send those out to you as council members. And then, yeah, if we do receive any more past that particular date, we can do that as well.
Are you sure that isn't putting an additional burden on staff to try and keep all of that together on who's all been disseminated and who hasn't yet?
No, we can, we can track that. Now that we have the Granicus system, the system that we use for Boards and Commission members where they can apply to, that can help us actually be a good tool for us to understand who's applied and when, and we'll track it that way.
Could you, could you just check with the people who actually have to do that work?
Sure, that's Krista. That's Krista, yeah.
But they have to actually do that work, and that's such a short timeframe. And if we don't get it until the 2nd, if we could get to pack it all together at the 2nd, or all these applications, we could potentially be interviewing people the next night. I think that's a little tight. So, I mean, the best I would want to do is Thursday. I mean, because I think the very next night after potentially getting that information is a little bit tight. But if you just check and make sure that we're not putting such a burden on the staff for that.
I appreciate your thinking of that process, yeah. From what I've seen, they come in PDFs, and so it's really simple for us just to bundle those PDFs and send them to you. But again, because it has sensitive information, we'll want to give you hard copies. So we'll have to have Ed McKee deliver those to you. So, I'll check with her and work that out.
Thank you. I think I heard the 4th as a possibility. Councilmember Martinez?
I was going to just say, in the past couple of times we've done this, it's caused a little bit of confusion when we received some in the beginning and some at the end. So I'd prefer to have them all at once, just for, so it's easier for staff, easier for us. We can have one giant stack of paper like this instead of two like this, and, you know, make sure everyone gets the same information. I think to keep it consistent, I would prefer that. Also, I think we should just go ahead and hold those evening times and for, if we do the 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, whatever. And if we don't need to use them all, then we don't. But at least if we have enough applicants to fill that time, then at least we have those dates on hold for us.
So now the suggestion is to hold the 3rd through the 11th. Is that correct?
We're going to get a lot of quality time together.
Yeah. Including the weekends? Does anybody have any preference, weekend versus weekday?
I'm fine with the weekends.
Yeah, okay. Others?
Not on the 3rd. I think doing it, I think anything that very next day is...
Again, we're just talking about placeholders here.
It is a lot of information to read, though, if we get it on the 2nd.
All right, so you want to just hold the 4th through the 11th?
Sunday, too.
Sunday, too?
Are we doing weekends, or just Thursday, 4th, 5th?
Let's take Sunday off the table, you know. Let's take Sunday off the table, you know, knowing that people have got issues on Sunday. So let's take Sunday off the table.
Possibility I may have to work on during the day. If you want to do it in the evening, let's party.
Yeah, great. So then, we're going to hold the evenings, basically, and afternoons on Saturday, from the fourth through the 11th, excluding the seventh, which is the Sunday, and of course, our regular meeting dates of the eighth.
And what time do those begin at? Is that five?
Five thirty is what I would pencil it in for right now, knowing that, you know, five thirty would probably be the earliest start time we could all probably generally agree to, unless you guys wanted to do something earlier, but then again, on Saturday, you know, I think that possibility exists, obviously, to do a much earlier start time. Councilmember Berentone?
That I could do in the evening on the weekends, but not during the day.
Thank you.
And also-
So we'll hold the evening of the sixth.
Also, I think, I think six o'clock to nine, or nine thirty is fine, but we need to have some kind of consistency. When we started moving the start times around, we ended up with some problems before, and we gave it a good effort, but I think we have to have some consistency in what we're, in what we're doing, but that depends also on how many people apply. The only reason we moved it to five thirty before was because we had 39 people, so if we don't have that many, then we can go ahead and take some consideration of it, but I think it needs to be kind of a little-
I think what you'll find is, you'll have the option to do five thirty start times and avoid a special meeting, so it's a preference of the council in my mind. You know, I think as we delve into the logistics and we start mapping out each of these, I think you'll find that if we started at five thirty on every night, you could avoid one meeting night, and again, that's up to us on how our schedules work, so again, I'm going to suggest the five thirty. If everybody wants to do six, let's do six. Councilmember Martinez?
I was just going to suggest also that I think, depending on how many interviews we have the last evening, I, depending on our mental capacity and our tiredness, I don't want to do what we did last time, which is have a whole round of interviews, and then decide amongst ourselves who's best for what. I would like to, if we have a full day of interviews for that last evening, I think we should make the decision on a separate evening.
Fair enough, and I've heard that, and, you know, I think, you know, maybe the goal then would be to try to adjourn these meetings regardless of where we're at in the process around 9:00 PM, or shortly thereafter.
Linda, I agree with keeping it consistent. I don't like five thirties because of work constraints, but I think it's better for the public. I think it's easier for them because then we're done by nine, so starting at five thirty is fine.
Okay, and again, my thought is, this is just a pencil placeholder for us for now. Okay, so now we've gotten the scheduling done, let's talk about-
I have one other question.
Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Martinez?
I was just going to say, on the board and commission application interview, I think we just need to update the date of when we're going to select to the 16th instead of the 15th because of the holiday.
Correct, you're right.
Councilmember, question?
So, one more time, what are the dates we're penciling in and the times? Five thirties are start time?
Yes, five thirties are start time, and we're penciling in, yeah, the fourth, the fifth, the sixth, the ninth, the 10th, and the 11th.
Ooh.
And again, hopefully, we can remove some of those.
Sure.
And I'll loop back around to the special meeting issue for the eighth, for the judge issue under members' choice a little bit later. I don't know if we need to deal with that quite right at this moment. Other questions or comments regarding District One vacancy process? Okay, thank you for that. I think we've got something relatively good to find here. Let's move forward to Agenda Item Four. This is Board Commission Council Liaison Discussion. Council will have the opportunity to discuss the assignment of council liaison positions now that the election has occurred. We did get an updated list of liaisons today here at your place. There were a couple still, you know, heading into this meeting that we realized we didn't put on here, which were school and hospital, you know, I think those were always sort of ad hoc in nature, and, you know, I'm hopeful that we can have more, you know, joint meetings with both these bodies, and so maybe those, you know, are necessary appointments, but I wanted to point out that these are not on this list that was distributed here. This is, again, updated from what we saw last time. It now includes Dr. Cog, CML Policy Committee, you know, clarifies that the Dr. Cog member doesn't need to be the mayor, you know, some of these other issues, so please take a look at that. My thought is, I'd probably just like to start, you know, at the top of this list, and just kind of go work our way down, and see if people have interest, and try to twist some arms into, into some service here as we go down the list. Councilmember Martinez?
I just had a question. I assume, once we get our new District One seat filled, we're going to have to have this discussion again, correct?
Well, for two reasons, my thought. One is because I hold a fair amount of seats, you know, obviously as the mayor, and so you'll, you'll have to do a second round once I vacate those positions, and so if anything, I'd like to highlight where those are as we go through the list, not necessarily appoint somebody or concede, get consensus on somebody tonight, but just to identify, hey, don't forget, we're going to have to come back to this here in a little while, and the second reason, of course, is to allow the District One voice, or an opportunity to serve on some of those bodies as well.
Perfect.
Councilmember Berentone?
Also, don't forget that a lot of the people that will apply may already be on a board or commission, and as we have had people who run for council, have already participated in a board or commission, and so in deference to that service, sometimes somebody will give up their liaison position if that person wishes to remain on the board, because they cannot remain any longer on council and still be a member of that board. So those are some of the considerations that just kind of happen naturally out of that, too, so I think it kind of happens on its own a little bit, in trying to make sure that any new member of this council would be welcome, but we don't want to overburden them with too much on that either, so I don't think that that's a problem in trying to do this prior to getting on there. So, I had one other question.
Yep.
It was my understanding that Dr. Cog was mayor mandatory, and it is still on here that it's mayor mandatory.
Oh, no, it isn't. It's been updated to just alternate there. Do you see it as Dr. Cog, and then it's blank?
No, it says Yates, alternate.
Yeah, but it says Jefferson, and it doesn't say anything about mayor now. Do you see that? It used to say mayor mandatory, just like firefighter pension board does below it.
New one, you should have had a new sheet, Councilmember.
No, this is the new packet that I got, but that's not, I didn't get it in here.
It wasn't in the packet, it was at our seats tonight.
On the table.
So, that one, well, why would I use that one when I got one?
Because it's more updated, sorry about that.
Well, it's underneath a bunch of other papers, so I would pull it out if I didn't-
Sorry about that.
All right, I see what you're saying.
That's what I was trying to identify.
That's fine. That's a question I had, since you said that, I go, no, it doesn't.
And again, rather than trying to go through this all at once, I'm going to take it one by one, and we'll get an opportunity to kind of discuss each of these, and say, hey, what do these do? If people've got questions, or whatever, feel free to raise them about each of these bodies as we kind of step through. Does that sound fair to everybody? Okay, I'm going to move forward with Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood. That is our first body. I am the liaison. Councilmember Yates was the alternate, so we have one alternate seat. This has been a body that historically has been trying to find its legs. I think it's finally done that, and we're really on, on a good path. One of their major functions right now is interviewing businesses, and sort of business outreach more generally. Obviously, in my mind, this is kind of the seat of the table that local business has on policy issues, so I think this is a very important body. Anybody interested? I didn't have anybody sign up.
I nominate Councilmember Wink.
There you go, Councilmember Wink. The arm twisting has begun, I love it.
I can't deny that.
You have to. She can speak for herself when I'm done, but-
If she could, you wouldn't be nominating her.
Sorry, let's, let's try to give the floor to Councilmember Olson. It's difficult for her to go back and forth on some of these issues. Councilmember Olson, go ahead.
Anyway, I don't know what someone said, but anyway, Cheryl did a job with the Arts Commission, in doing some kind of strategizing and setting up some grids for evaluating and figuring things out together as they go forward, and I think that Ace would really benefit from that kind of thing, but I don't know if Councilmember Wink, if she have a lick of interest in it at all.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Councilmember Olson. I'm interested in serving in whatever way benefits our city, and that includes our council, so if you all nominate me for 10 boards and commissions, I'll serve on them, and I'll make it work, and so while the Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood isn't at the very top of my list, nor is it in the middle of my list in terms of interests, I'm here to, I'm here to help, so.
Thank you, and I appreciate your willingness to serve. Is it higher up on anybody else's list? It's been kind of my baby, I'd love to sign somebody else, kind of.
The time they meet.
Yeah, you know, and that's-
Go with you. Well, but I just, I really do think that some fresh eyes and fresh perspective, I mean, there's some great people working on that commission, too, but maybe somebody could come again from the outside, and it could, it could stand to have some sort of criteria for moving forward and making sure that they're using their time the best.
And keep in mind, this is one of those positions that will need a second appointment here very shortly, once I leave, so don't worry, you all get a second chance, a bite at this apple, to serve on Ace. Councilmember Martinez?
I was going to say, maybe if nobody's jumping at the chance for some of these, maybe we put them on the bottom of the list and then come back to them, because I think what we're going to find is, like, when I first got on, I took all kinds of boards and commissions, and some other councilmembers did not, so I think we all want to get a fair chance at serving where we are interested in.
I'm going to pencil Cheryl in, since she didn't run, for now, before we move on to the next one. You know, I would also encourage Councilmember Questa to consider this as well, you know, being a newer member as well. I agree with Councilmember Olson in that, you know, we could probably use some new blood, new life, and some energy there, and I think they would be happy to work with you guys, so I would encourage you as well. So I'm going to pencil in Wink for now, and I'm going to move us on to, no, Board Adjustment Appeals, of course, is quasi-judicial, no liaison. I'm going to move us on to Budget Advisory Committee. Their meeting time has changed to 5:15. This new document shows the accurate time now. I am one of the liaisons. I believe this is a body where we have two liaisons, and I believe that's actually been codified in our ordinance on this, when we made this a permanent body, and so we have a second member. Councilmember Olson, did you express interest in this seat? I got a little confused based on the memorandum from the city attorney's office. Okay.
Yeah, part of my problem has been because of the time, and when we're three, seven, I, I sometimes teach class from four to six on Tuesdays, and so this next quarter, I will be, that's, I just don't want to be absent all the time.
No, fair enough.
And my students, we need to let them out early, but I can't keep doing that.
Councilmember Wink has expressed interest. The email, others interested in Budget Advisory Committee. I think this is one of our best bodies that we have, a really deep dive on operations. Candidly, I think, I'd encourage all councilmembers to, you know, take a look at some of these meetings and review some of the content, as it really does do a great deep dive on a lot of different departments and operations, and I picked up so much information about the city just from attending these meetings. Anybody else interested besides Cheryl Wink? Cheryl, thank you for your service. I'm going to pencil you in for BAC.
You can pen me in there, no?
Okay, I'm penning, I'm penning you in for this one. This was, this was near the top of the list, I believe, so I'm pen, I'm penning you in for this one, and then-
Point of information, Mayor, tomorrow night is the next meeting.
Yes, so tomorrow at 5:15, come on down.
Third floor.
And that is another one, again, where we'll need a second appointment when I leave, so again, another bite at the apple for budget advisory. Please consider stepping up into that role. I think it's a great one. Again, for new members, Questa encouraging you as well. Sorry, I'm just going to encourage you to, to put you to work here. Okay, I'm going to move us on to CML Policy Committee. Right now, this is Linda. I don't think we have any issues there. Linda, you want to stay on there, correct?
I'm fine with staying on. If someone else wants to do it, you certainly can. It's not every month, it's quarterly, and it comes when there are policy lobbying going on in the state. It's very interesting. It doesn't always have a direct relationship to us as a city. Not all of the things that we support are going to have an impact on Inglewood one or the other, but it creates a whole state. So I'm fine either way. I'm glad to do it. If someone else really wants to do it, that's fine, too.
I would be interested in that one.
Excellent. It is kind of a general, all-day kind of business meeting, and, and this is a recommending body to the executive committee that is elected through CML. Anybody else interested? Councilmember Martinez has expressed some interest in this position?
I just wanted you to let her know that.
Okay, yeah.
The next meeting is actually the eighth all day, or the start of the day, so-
January eighth.
If you can, if you want to do it that day, I also can do it that day, if you want to start following, that's fine, too.
Maybe, Councilmember Olson, if you want to do the eighth, then I can do the following one?
Anybody have any objection to that? I feel like that's a great idea. Thank you for that. So right now, I will put in Martinez here. Okay, I'd like to move us on to Code Enforcement Advisory. This, again, is another ad hoc committee. We do have one vacancy. This is a tenure by, as councilmember appointment, is my understanding, or at least what it says on this list here. We do have one vacancy. Nobody has expressed interest. Is anybody interested? Councilmember Berentone?
I don't believe there's two.
Actually, I, I think I was sitting on that as an alternate, and when councilmember, or when Mayor Potem Gillett stepped down a couple of months ago, I just, I'm, I'm okay with that. I would like the-
Okay.
And I don't believe that it's actually in the code for two. It just became one through an issue, kind of where this alternate started showing up, so it actually isn't an official second position.
Okay. If you don't mind, let's get a double check on that, but I, that probably is true, and so let's just, right now, we're viewing it as Councilmember Russell as the, as the liaison. Is anybody else interested in that role? Okay, seeing none, you know, a lot of-
Gone to a couple of meetings, she's got it handled.
And a lot of these where we don't have an official alternate, you know, I think it's appropriate for councilmembers to call other councilmembers and say, hey, I can't make that meeting, would you mind filling in for me for code, and catch them up to speed on what those issues are. If there's no alternate lined up for you, you know, in my mind, that means call somebody else on the council, if you can. Okay, let's move on to Cultural Arts. This is Amy Martinez. I assume you want to hold on to this one, or how do you feel?
I would like to. I know, though, if Cheryl Wink was also a member of that, as was I, prior to council, so if you want to alternate or switch off for that one, I would be happy to do that, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Member Martinez. So, today I resigned as Chair of Cultural Arts, and I think what, I think if given the opportunity, and if there's time, perhaps I could join you once in a while at the meetings, but I think you're doing a really fantastic job there.
Thank you.
So let's leave it that way.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Sorry, did you guys just agree to alternate? Is that kind of what was?
No.
But if she, if she can join when she wants to, anytime, which of course, any councilmember can, or if I can't make it, I can ask her.
Fantastic. So we're going to keep it as Martinez for now?
Yes.
I'll move us on to Dr. Cog, which, again, is Denver Regional Council of Governments. I am the member now. Councilmember Yates was the alternate. We do have a alternate seat available at this time. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Questa, and then Councilmember Wink.
Yes, sir, thank you. I do have an interest in the councils of government, reading over their position statements on both state and federal issues over the past three years that they have online. I really appreciate their interest in infrastructure, transportation, housing especially, and then a focus on elderly issues that advance as the population gets a bit more senior in some cities. In terms of infrastructure, I'm also personally interested in wiring every city as much as possible for internet, and it seems to be an issue that's emerging with them. I think I would play a very good role. I worked for state government for 11 years. My current job has me interfacing with government in a very frequent basis, and I think I would be a great person for that seat. Thank you.
Sir, Councilmember Wink?
Yes, Dr. Cog is at the very top of my list. One consideration I had given, Councilmember Questa and I both are interested in Dr. Cog, how likely is it, or possible is it, that the group may allow for two alternates?
I think it's pretty clear in the, in the body, governing body language, that each city gets one rep and one alternate, and their, you know, their policies, I think, are fairly clear on that.
Quite firm. So now, what do we do?
Well, we're going to have to come to some consensus, and Councilmember Olson has also expressed interest in this role.
Correct.
Councilmember Olson, I'll turn it over to you, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Berentone for further comment.
Yeah, I have wanted to be on this one for a while, but partly letting mayors or, and so interested as well, because I'm doing CML, I thought it's really probably not both. One of my concerns is that, I think we need to be really clear about understanding what our city's own interests are in Dr. Cog, and making sure that we understand that as we bring it to, bring our city's needs, and so I, I think both Dave and Cheryl, you have great interest in it. I, I love that, and maybe it's fine if you want to be served, but I'd also love to take on a few of the city ones first, and get to know what our own needs are, if you start representing us more in the region, but, you know, I'm not going to die on this, and that's for sure. I don't have any that I'm going to die on.
We appreciate that. Everybody's being very cordial. Councilmember Berentone?
Councilmember Olson is correct. This is a representation. Dr. Cog is Councilmember- Councilmember Olson is correct. This is a representation. Dr. Cog, as Councilmember Questa rightly pointed out, is the vehicle that we funnel federal money back through this area, and we don't always have as much, say, as some of the bigger boys, but if we don't have somebody representing at the table for exactly how Dr. Cog and some of their outreach, and some overreach of what's going on, and this entity gets used by the federal government in order to go ahead and do some funneling of funding, and some outreach and overreach as well. So there are kind of several areas that we have to pay attention to, is that we're getting our representation, as Councilmember Olson has said, that we're getting the funding, when necessary, put to how it benefits our region, and some of the overreach, which is the, they were funded in order to go ahead and kind of do some of the new urbanism and density and stuff, and how that affects us as well. That's part of their policy. So it's kind of a three-pronged thing, and it is very important that people understand what's going on, and maybe Mayor Jefferson used it. It's also a networking situation for us. See, now he shakes his head really good on that one. But it is important to me that, like Councilmember Olson said, that we have somebody that understands the function of this organization and exactly how we're being represented, so I'm fine with Councilmember Olson taking the lead on that, and then deciding between one of the two of our newer members of, since they seem to have done some homework on some of this stuff, that maybe we could then mentor somebody so that somebody else could step in and take that, because it is an important role, so just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I agree. I would support Councilmember Olson as the senior member of council for the seat right now, and then when your seat is vacated, then, you know, talking about the others at that point in time.
Thank you.
Wouldn't you want an alternate to attend now, though? I mean, we have to do one now.
It would be Linda Olson, Councilmember Olson, for right now.
Oh, because—
She's still around.
Oh, did you know Joe isn't giving it up, Linda? No.
(laughing)
I misunderstood. I'm sorry. I thought both were open now. I apologize.
Can we move on to Councilmember Questa?
I'm happy to yield to Councilmember Olson on the alternate seat, and then show and I can rock, paper, scissors for the alternate when the time comes along.
Oh, no, this board, we will stick, yes.
Great. I think that's wise. I agree. I would support Councilmember Olson as our senior member to represent us in a more regional capacity. I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm gonna pencil in, or I'm gonna put in Linda here as the alternate for Dr. Cog. We do have a meeting coming up, January 3rd, I believe, we have our work session. Typically, I do, you know, they allow you to do those online. Linda, my thought is, if you wanted to, maybe we could just use the next regular meeting as the opportunity, when the full membership is there, to bring you down, and kind of, actually, I'm not gonna be around. What am I talking about? We should go on the 3rd, and I'll introduce you to whoever's there, and we'll start from there. How about that?
Yeah, on the 3rd, aren't we interviewing boards and commissions?
No.
No, we penciled in the 4th, remember? We started on the 4th.
I've taken all my evenings.
Yeah, exactly. And if you can't make it, just let me know. We'll talk a little bit offline on how to coordinate this. Okay, I'm gonna move us on, and thank you, everybody, again, for working together on this. This is going swimmingly. Inglewood Housing Authority is Councilmember Barantine. You wanna stay there, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll move us on. Does anybody have interest there? I'll move us on to Firefighter Pension, that's mayor mandatory. I'll move us on to Keeping Inglewood Beautiful, that is Councilmember Martinez. You interested in staying on there?
Absolutely. I love this group.
Excellent. Anybody else interested in KEB? I'll move us on, then, to Malle Center Trust Fund. This looks like a tenure, and again, it looked like two members from the sheet that was provided. Councilmember Russell?
I really don't think there is two members, and I've really been the person for the last several months, so.
Thank you for the clarification. So do you think there's an alternate, or no?
No, there's not.
I don't think there is.
Okay. Councilmember Olson, did you have a comment?
I wonder if it was because, at one point, Jim was on it and appointed, and maybe it got mixed up.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Somehow, there, you know, there's been a little confusion on some of these, so it's great that we're clarifying these, and, you know, making clear what's an official position and what's not. Okay, so that was, doo-doo-doo-doo, Malle Center. So we got Russell, and we're saying that we don't believe there's an alternate, so I'm just gonna move us past that unless anybody else is interested. To non-emergency, Employees' Retirement, that was Councilmember Yates. This is a tenure as councilmember appointment. Is anybody interested in serving? I didn't have anybody mention this body, and this is the, probably the largest of our, you know, ones that we manage, at least, because the, you know, old hires' pensions are much smaller.
They're active.
Mm-hmm. So this is the one that we manage that's active. Councilmember Barantine?
Again, it's the time, and there is, I know they only meet four times a year, but is it always at four?
It has been, but, you know, I think that could be discussed. You know, I think most of these people are retirees, and so, you know, I think that you've probably got some flexibility in the scheduling, you know what I mean?
Well, if I get on there, we're gonna make that a requirement. You have to be retired to get a retirement pension.
I think they are. These are nominated by the employees, right?
Well, there are two-sitting employees.
They're active.
Oh, okay.
But there's a retirement.
And just as a point of information, I think the reason why it's at four is the city's firm that helps to guide them, Innovest, is that right? I think the name's Innovest. They stipulate that they need to be there during their working hours for some reason.
Oh, I, okay.
Because if they have to make a trade or something, they can do it from the meeting. However, that's not to say you couldn't talk to Carol Westcoat, who oversees that from the retirement perspective, to change the time.
But if it's only, I mean, so it's only the four times a year?
Yeah.
If nobody else would like to serve, I would be more than happy to. I don't have, I'm not bad with numbers or money.
That's right. So anybody else have any interest? I'm gonna consider Councilmember Barantine has consensus on this, and perhaps you can put her in touch with Carol and make sure that, you know, figure out some of the logistics there, and figure out if there's a more convenient time.
I think four, I think four will work.
It's okay for you?
That's the reason, but—
Now, you guys get offline if there's a change needed.
Yeah, I'm good. We don't need to discuss.
Yeah, agreed. So I'll move us on to non-emergency, oh, no, wait, Parks and Rec, and that is Councilmember Olson. Councilmember Olson, I assume you want to stay on Parks and Rec?
I'm glad, it's a wonderful commission. If somebody wants to be on it, because it's a really, I mean, it's one of those coveted ones within a lot of cities who want to be on. You learn a lot about Parks and Rec from being on. I'm willing to step aside with someone if they really want to be on it, but I'm also willing to serve the fun group.
Thank you. Anybody have an interest in Parks and Rec? I didn't hear anybody via email, not seeing anybody rising. Councilmember Olson, if you'll stick around, I think we would appreciate it.
I'll do it.
I'm gonna move us on to Police and Fire, that's mayor mandatory. Move us on to Police Officer Pension, mayor mandatory. Move us on to Public Library. This is Councilmember Martinez. Are you okay there?
I actually would like to have someone else serve in this role, because I have a conflict meeting right before that with KEB, and often it overlaps, and I'm late or unable to make the library meeting, so I would like to pass that on, pass that torch to somebody else.
Any interest from any of the membership?
Also a really great group, and really active.
Public Library Board. Get to work with Dorothy, and—
You could nominate someone if you don't volunteer.
Yep.
I nominate Linda Olson.
I think Councilmember Olson has enough boards and commissions.
Yeah.
I'll trade you Parks for Library.
Yeah, he's saying he'll do Parks if he'll do Library.
Yeah, that's fine. Why, it's on Tuesday nights, is that right?
Tuesday at 7:00 PM, second Tuesday?
I can do that.
Okay. So Olson in Public Library, and Questa then in Parks and Rec. Look at that. Horse trading. Look at that. Impressive. Okay, move us on to Transportation Advisory. This is a vacancy from Councilmember Yates. I think this is a tenure as councilmember appointment. Anybody interested in transportation? Councilmember Martinez?
I would be interested in this one.
Excellent. This is becoming more active and engaged, and I think, you know, they need to be a more critical part of the development process just more generally, you know, and at time. I think giving us a second opinion on some of these, you know, traffic studies that are paid for by developers and other things, you know, I feel like I see so many opportunities to engage them.
I do, too, and with that, I think there could be a lot of overlap or collaboration with Keeping Inglewood Beautiful and Culture Arts Commission, so I think it makes sense for me to be, serve on this one as well.
Excellent. Anybody else interested in transportation? Seeing nobody. Councilmember Martinez, thank you. Urban Renewal is not Jefferson, it was actually Yates, and Yates is now gone, so we do have a vacancy on Urban Renewal. Councilmember Barantine?
Looking at the law and the way that it's set up in the state statutes, it is, it's arguably somewhat tenuous on what the elected official can be in. There can only be one elected official, hence our discussion before, when there were two of you. And I never would want to put this council or any councilmember in a position where they can't vote on a measure, because there is some concern and some history with some possible conflict of interest. If an urban renewal board has to bring forward a plan to the council, I'm still voting on that plan, because you've been part of both of them.
I think this is a non-voting position.
Actually, no. It is a voting position.
Oh, really?
That's the way I read the state statute.
I would think I'd remember if I voted or not on some of these meetings that I went to for years. City Attorney?
Voting and participating are two different things, and I get it.
No, Councilmember Barantine's brought up a great point, and I'll go back and read the statute. I've been actually working with my intern Jenna to create a table, because so many of these positions, you're all aware of, but there's nothing in code, there's nothing in policy, there's nothing anywhere. So a lot of this is just your history, and you know this stuff, but nobody else does. So we'll go back and look at this one, because this is state statute, but what I've got right now is there's nothing within our city anything that creates this position.
No, because the board is created by state statute. I mean, we follow the state statute for this. So after reading it, and you're right, I have studied this and looked into it for a lot of different reasons, and I would be willing to take on the spot, but with the understanding that I am extremely sensitive to the conflict of interest that could potentially happen in over-participating with this board, and then being, and then being put in a position of voting. But I would like the city attorney to take a look at it first, and then if we still want to put an elected member on there, which we do not have to do, but if we do, that I wouldn't mind taking that spot, and with the promise that I would be extremely sensitive, as I think everybody here is already well aware of, extremely sensitive to the law, and overstepping our place on this, on this board, because they are their own body politic. But if we could give the city attorney a little chance to take a look at it and figure out some of the potential pitfalls and things that have happened with some other cities with this, especially recently with the surge of TIF and all the stuff. But if that comes back, I would be willing to take that on, if you guys would trust me. It's up to you.
Yeah, like I said, I think historically, it hasn't been a voting membership, and, you know, maybe some of these state statutes, I know, have changed on, you know, bodies for urban renewal bodies, and so, again, I'm hearing Councilmember Barantine, if we can just get some clarity on that. Councilmember Wink? Do you have something? Okay. Anybody else interested in Urban Renewal? All right, we're gonna pencil Loretta in here for now. Make sure there's no issues there, and we'll get some more information from the City Attorney's Office. Water and Sewer is next. Two current vacancies. I believe both as tenure appointments from council. Council, Mayor Protem Gillett, as well as Councilmember Yates, were both on there. This is also one where we'll have another vacancy when I'm out, so two seats now and a third. So, and I didn't have anybody sign up for this one, so Councilmember Wink?
I'm very interested in this position.
Everybody fought for that one.
Oh, we still are, we're just not here.
Yeah, now people are showing me green here, so now people are interested. Sorry, Councilmember Wink, did you—
Wink is interested.
Okay, excellent. Councilmember Barantine?
I really think that the, obviously, the mayor, Mayor Protem, sat before. I think that that would be something, I don't know whether Councilmember Russell is interested or not, and it's obviously another one of my study factors over the last 15 years that I would like to sit on this board.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I actually have an interest in serving on this board as well.
Thank you. We've got three interested people for two positions. Anybody else? Anybody want to weigh in on how we want to whittle this down? Anybody want to offer something?
Who are the three right now?
The three are Wink, Russell, and Barantine.
Okay.
And again, this is a tenure appointment, a voting membership on the Water and Sewer Commission.
Put a newbie and a, not a newbie.
I like it. I like that.
I would tend to disagree that we should put anybody new on this board. I think, I have not ever, either my previous time on council or this past two years, asked to be put on this. I have participated in what was going on at the, both Water and Sewer Plant and the Water Plant at a pretty extensive level, and I think that I will bring to a level of, of understanding about what's going on that is necessary, given what's going on with both the Water Department and the Sewer. So I think that this is an extremely important asset of the city, and I think it's unfair to put somebody new into that situation.
Hey, we've heard one suggestion of seniorship, senior membership. We've heard one suggestion of, hey, let's mix it up with junior and senior. Anybody else want to weigh in? Councilmember Russell, back to you.
Well, if I weigh in, I'm gonna vote for senior membership.
(laughing)
Of course, but I actually, you know, there was no opportunity, and I would not have had any idea really the importance of it until, you know, things have transpired in the last two years that we've been on council, and so I would appreciate the opportunity to serve on that board.
Thank you. Others want to weigh in? Any feelings here from Questa or Martinez on, I guess I'm leaning towards the mishmash of junior and senior, and I would let you guys somehow rochambo.
After six years of serving on council, I'm not gonna get, I mean, come on. This is, I really think that of the boards that we've just discussed, for this all of a sudden to be one of the boards that we would even want to consider, I mean, I can see Dr. Cog trying to have somebody new and mentored in there, but with the current issues and lawsuits and investigations and problems going on, I think it's important that we have people that are experienced on this.
I guess honestly, I'm a little bit, I don't know, you've been so, like you said, you studied so much, and I agree that you've put in a lot of work on these issues. I feel like you're so close to these issues. Candidly, I'm a little concerned, and so—
Oh, clever, but not, it's not selling me.
No, fair enough. I'm not asking to sell you. I'm simply stating my opinion.
If knowing too much of this issue makes me unqualified, so be it.
Thank you. So now we're at a 2-2, 2-2 kind of draw here, if—
Oh, no, that's not what—
Oh, no, we're not. We're actually 3-2, because I assume Wink wants to support herself. So in my mind, I could use some help from members Questa and Martinez to help me gain some consensus on this. Councilmember Questa?
Cheryl, can you give me your pitch?
Yeah.
Again, I'm here to serve the city and serve it well through this council, so I support what's best for the city. What Councilmember Barantine said is pretty key, and our water is our number-one asset, and so I have toward the plant. I don't have her live experience with it, but I'm intelligent and I can learn, and so the fact of my not having this intimate knowledge of these factors, I think regardless of who the senior member is to couple with a junior council member, it's a learning opportunity. And I think all of the boards and commission positions are important, and in dire need of good representation and good communication back and forth among the constituents and us, so, yeah, I'll stop there.
With that, I will concede.
Okay, there we go. Some consensus might be emerging here. Anybody have any further comments or concerns about that? Councilmember Olson? Yeah, so Councilmember Russell said that she would concede to Councilmember Barantine, and that Wink and Barantine might could move forward with the two seats. Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? I think that was the last board of commission. Oh, the other two that were not on the list were school and hospital. Historically, these have been ad hoc. You know, I don't know that this is necessary at this moment. I hope that we have more joint meetings with the school body. I hope that, one of the things with the hospital, I believe they, you guys, Linda, didn't you tell me you guys actually had been over there with them more recently? And they have also... Sorry, go ahead, Linda.
Manager Kek was with us too, and it was really, after realizing that Swedish had gone through a transition of leadership, it was time to kind of get on board with them and look at the Inglewood Magazine. It really, you know, took off in some ways that was great. I do think that we should have more quarterly meetings, perhaps, or maybe, maybe twice a year with both hospitals. I get calls related to hospital stuff all the time from my constituents, and it's good to have good relationships with those folks. I'd love to stay involved in that. It'd be great. It's a great way to learn. It's not a huge commitment.
You know, one of the other things I think that's happened is, you know, we do have a representative from Swedish on ACE. And at our last ACE meeting, she suggested that, you know, the CEO and the C... But, you know, some of their executive membership wanted to meet with the mayor and the city manager. You know, agreed to say, hey, let's try to put this together. I mean, they were knocking on our door. I feel like it's a great opportunity to build this relationship further. You know, so I guess I'm wondering, you know, how the council or body would like to kind of handle that, you know, through this school system, through the mayor's office. You know, I think that we could probably just continue to do both if everybody's comfortable with that. I just wanted to let you know that, hey, you know, there's been a lot more touch points, I think, since the changeover in leadership over at Swedish, or maybe, you know, post sometime past the turnover there. So, historically, Linda, how many people have been involved with the school and the hospital?
I'm not a school one, but you remember, we all went, maybe you weren't there the night, but we all went at the council to the school one. I thought that was fantastic.
Yes.
Maybe you were involved in that. And then, the most recent hospital one was just Rick, myself, and Eric. And who else came? Somebody else from the city? If you were there, I don't remember.
Just the three of them.
But it did take off a really great conversation and quite a bit of great energy, even a little healthy competition between Craig and Swedish. And I think that Ruben cutting this last week was an example of they want the city and chain run board and things.
Agreed. Thank, agreed. Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I didn't hear her. Did she still want to be on there?
Yeah, she's on the hospital. She said yes.
What?
I'm sorry.
I would like to be involved.
Okay.
Because it's happened by district.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I would like to also stay on with the school district. And previously, it was Councilmember Gillett and myself. I would like to stay engaged, particularly because I have a stepdaughter in the schools right now. And traditionally, I have been going to as many meetings as possible and reporting back to council what's going on, and also working with their subcommittee. So, if there's other members of this council that would like to participate in that subcommittee. So, typically, it has been Eric and Superintendent Wendy Rubin, and two members of their group and two members of our group to meet kind of... It was happening, I think, bimonthly, but we may move to quarterly now that their group has changed as well. And then, talk about doing more regular all-group meetings where we all meet together, which the last one was great.
I think that was fantastic. And we came up with a very long laundry list of ideas. And I think, you know, if we could have this sort of subcommittee that constantly kind of advanced the ball and then brought it back to, I think, both bodies on a group meeting, maybe once or twice a year, then I think that's...
Absolutely. And I think that's the importance of the subcommittee, so we can still keep doing the actual work and keeping the both groups updated.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell? Do you have anything? Barantine?
So, how many people, you said, Amy, that it was you and...
Councilmember Gillett.
...before? I would be interested in doing the school one.
Anybody else interested in the schools? Thank you. I've got Councilmember Barantine then on the school body, and then on the hospital. Anybody interested there? These are our two largest employers in the city.
Interested in that one as well. Depending on how often they meet, you said it was a...
Quarterly.
Quarterly? And how often was the school?
But we should, we could.
With the schools, with the subcommittees, we need to get back together with our new groups and decide what makes the most sense, if it's monthly or quarterly.
What were they doing before?
I think quarterly.
Quarterly, okay.
I think, you know, both these bodies, I think, have been kind of trying to figure out, you know, the school and the hospital, you know, how often, who do we meet with? I think we're all kind of figuring that out.
With my, I served on both the Colorado State Board of Nursing and the Colorado Medical Services Board, and would be really interested in going ahead and doing the hospital one as well.
Thank you. Anybody else interested in the hospital as well? Thank you for stepping up. Councilmember Barantine. Excellent. I think that concludes Board and Commission Council Liaison Discussion. Any final comments or questions? Yes?
State statute says that, says a whole lot. But the parts that you care about is, not more than one of the commissioners appointed by the mayor may be an official of the municipality. And the term of office of a commissioner of an authority who is a municipal official is not affected or curtailed by the expiration of the term of his or her municipal office. It would be a voting member, but...
Well, I just want to, because the member who was on because of the issue that happened with the lift board in Littleton and the lawsuit between them and the county, Corbin Sackdahl at that time as the assessor, which I attended that lawsuit thing. You had the members of that council step down from attending meetings. So, I think if we're going to go ahead and have somebody, then I'd like to get together with you exactly on what the limitation of that role would be, where it would ever affect me. And I want to give you an opportunity to look at those court cases and the problems that have happened and where it's been believed it's interfered, so that you can adequately advise on the best way for us to participate there. So, I don't mind serving, and I would be more than happy to bring information on what they're doing. But with the caveat that I would be extremely sensitive to putting myself or this council ever in a position where we would ever not be able to represent and vote on anything that they were doing. So, I'll give you some more time. I already got penciled in as it. Take some time and look at where other people have gone into the rocks, and let's make sure we don't.
I'm happy to meet with you on that. I think that's incredibly important. I think what this statute is saying for all the rest of the council that you need to be aware of is, this is not a council liaison. This is actually being a full-fledged member of the Inglewood Urban Renewal Association. And even if this person leaves the council, they continue in their role as Inglewood Urban Renewal Association member.
So is Councilmember Yates the member?
And we, again...
Former Councilmember Yates?
Councilmember Barantine and I'll meet, and we'll discuss some of these elements. But just for you to be aware, this is not a liaison position. This is a full-fledged membership.
And, you know, I just feel like we've never really formalized, you know, any of that appointment process. You know, keep in mind, I think even, you know, my appointment to urban renewal was probably very similar to this process in some sort of informal consensus and no actual formal action in a regular meeting. So, maybe that's something we need to be aware of and take some formal action on after we kind of flush some of these issues out. Councilmember Martinez, is there just something else?
I do. I just want to say, I think this discussion went really well, and I'm glad we're all excited about our new positions. I assume we're excited about our new positions. But just want to make sure that, because I have five, and I don't want to seem like I'm hoarding if somebody wants to take on one of my roles. I know Mayor Pro Tem Russell has a couple, and Questa has one with one alternate position. I just want to make sure everyone knows, if you want any of mine, I'd be happy to share. I don't want to be hoarding them all, although I love all the ones that I chose. Don't want to seem like I'm taking too many.
Appreciate that offer. I'll move to Councilmember Questa, and then maybe Member Olson.
Yes, sir, thank you. I feel as though there might still be a few things to shake out in a possible realignment in January, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Depending upon who becomes mayor in effort, several names, of course, that there could be a readjustment there. And then, of course, we would have our council member District One person coming on who may want to share in the wealth that you are currently holding. So I feel as though this is not entirely settled, although I'm thrilled with Parks and Rec. But it seems like there's still a few other chips to fall here.
Yes, just to be clear, besides the mayor mandatory positions, I see several things that will be coming open, including ACE, Water and Sewer, Budget Advisory, and Dr. Cog, that will need to be kind of reevaluated. Councilmember Olson, then Councilmember Barantine. Did you have something, Councilmember Olson?
Well, I agree with what Dave just said. I think it's going to still shake out some more as long as we're all flexible and realize, yeah, we need to make sure the new person is incorporated in some ways. And sometimes after this settles down a little bit, everybody realizes maybe one's better for them over another. So if we can remain open to that option, if one or another, I think that'll be good.
And there's always scheduling considerations that could, you know, change things a little bit. So always speak up if that's an issue for you. Councilmember Barantine?
I appreciate what Councilmember Questa said. I think it is incumbent on some of the senior, I was going to say senior, seasoned, seasoned.
Experienced.
Yeah, they're experienced members of council. And I think sometimes, I think it's good for the newer, when you're new on council to kind of get your feet wet a little. So, I would never pressure anybody, and nor do we do some kind of count on who's got it and who doesn't. I mean, sometimes you have, like we did two years ago, you have some people that are very interested in things and want to do a lot, and you don't want to step in their way or take that away. And then, as you come and find out that issues are going on and where your expertise might be more important, it kind of flushes itself out. So, I think you're right. I think we'll have an opportunity to actually visit this sooner than most, than we usually do on council. And we'll kind of see how it is then. But I would never bemoan, and have done that in the past, have attended meetings and not wanted to be the liaison for very specific reasons, but still attended the meetings, because you play a much different role and to be very careful of the role that you're trying to play. So, without doing a count or saying that people are doing more or less, because we all attend meetings, whether we're the liaison or not sometimes. So, I think we ought to wait and see how that flushes out. Thanks.
You, Councilmember Russell?
I actually agree. I think this has been a very productive time. And I think in working together, that, you know, if somebody's busy, it's possible that somebody else would be available on that too. And I'm very excited to see this moving forward now. And I agree that probably this is going to flush out some more. So, anyway, appreciate it.
Thank you. Manager Kek, did you have a comment?
I'm so happy that we have a city attorney, because she's reviewed every one of these. And so, the question came up earlier regarding code enforcement advisory. Apparently, when the analysis was done, it does indicate there are two council liaisons. So, if you go back to code enforcement advisory, you have Member Russell as one. You do have another slot.
Okay. You've identified the ordinance there?
It's in 210... Yep.
There you go. So, let's pencil in somebody for now, then, a second code member. Anybody interested?
Not everybody at once.
I attend the meetings, and I want to do it from a seat that does not make me an official anything at that meeting. But I have been attending the meetings. And quite honestly, knowing the history of how that got put in as a second member, attending was very issue-driven at the time. This is an advisory board. And I think if they have one more official sitting at the table telling them all what to do, the board is already having a hard enough time.
We could direct council to, or staff to amend.
So, you might want to reconsider and kind of go back to how that all happened, because it was very... It was the dog issue.
There you go. And I'd be open, I think, to gaining some consensus to directing staff to modifying that if that's what we wanted to do and go back to one liaison. Councilmember Russell?
I do have a question here. It says meets ad hoc basis determined by council or chair. What does that mean? Does that mean the whole council determines, or the council liaison, or what does that mean?
I can explain that somewhat. So, you recall a few years back, Code Enforcement Advisory Committee wasn't even meeting, and they were struggling. And so, the idea was to make it more of an ad hoc committee as opposed to a regular commission. And so, they started to meet, again predicated upon issues. And so, once that transpired, the council basically gave direction to say, at that time, you guys determine when you're going to meet in an ad hoc fashion. And I believe that's when Mr. Cohen was still on there at that time. But now, it is driven more by the chairperson and issues. So, personally, I think there are enough issues that would drive them to meet more frequently. Would like to see that, so that they can start to feed things up through the, through staff and to the council. So, I think it's more along the lines of them establishing a regular meeting rhythm and sticking to it.
And can I ask another question? And this is probably more for the city attorney. Do we have any idea when you're going to be starting meeting with the different? I don't know whether you're meeting with the committees or with the chairpersons, or what that's going to look like.
We're going to be bringing back a Boards and Commissions Training Manual to the governing body soon, in the next meeting, maybe the next meeting. And after we do that and we get approval and direction from the council, we'd like to move forward on that, on that training. We'd like that to start in January.
Is that ad hoc codified as well in that same language? I think that ad hoc might just be informal direction given by this council. And in my mind, can go back if, you know, they so chose, without that necessary direction of council. But, you know, my thought is if we have consensus to go back to one council member, perhaps we could, you know, direct them to say, hey, at least meet quarterly, or, you know what I mean? Because I would like to see them get back to a more regular meeting as well, knowing, you know, all the changes in code issues that have happened over the last few years. Anybody have any strong feelings on that? Does anybody want to be the second liaison before we go down that road?
I'm just there for moral support.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to suggest, then, the consensus of council is to go back to a single liaison for this body. I think so. I think so. I'm sorry, Olson. Councilmember Olson?
I think I agree with, I agree with you. I think that's what we should do.
Yeah, okay. And, you know, if any direction is needed, I think the consensus of this body, I'm going to suggest, correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody disagrees, is that we'd like to see them meeting on a more regular basis, at least quarterly.
Actually, we have been meeting on a fairly regular basis in the last few months.
Great. Our new manager's got you guys meeting, maybe?
The council directed me back in June, or agreed with me, I don't remember how it all worked out. But however it worked out, that I was to bring back an updated Chapter Two. Because right at the moment, as I said, it's not clear on liaisons, it's not clear on what's voting. Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, there's no mandated number of meetings. It says that they can adopt their own rules and regulations and meet whenever they want to. So, what we're looking for is standardization. We weren't wanting to bring this forward to the governing body until we actually had a training manual, because the training manual gives us a good idea of the direction that this council wants. I mean, we can throw out all of our ideas, but this is your choice. And so, step one, we'll bring the training manual back. And after you give the input, we'll bring back the entire Chapter Two. And I'm hoping toward the end of February. And that way, you'll have some time to look at it before you have to do, go through this process again.
And I don't see any reason why either their body or our body would sort of pound the table for a second liaison at this time. So, I feel comfortable with that and leaving that liaison issue to be settled with all the other Title II issues we have. So, I'm fine with that. Is everybody generally on board with that? Excellent. And we'll be able to clean up a lot of these issues at the same time, rather than doing it piecemeal. Great. Any final comments on Board and Commission Liaison Discussion? Okay, I'll move us on to Council Strategic Planning Discussion. Interim Assistant City Manager Mark Wolf is present to discuss the city council strategic planning.
Mayor, may we have a minute to set up?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Olson.
I am on a limited phone here, and it's going to die in about two minutes, so I'm just going to sign off.
Okay, thank you for participating via phone tonight. Have a good night.
Mayor, may we have a minute to set this up? We do have some slides.
Please. We'll take a two-minute recess.
Two minutes? I can't even mark that back.
I've got an over problem.
The whole five.
I've got an over problem, so I'm going to literally break, you know? We're always over on the brakes.
Other issue that I'm covering.
First of all, neither member thought that they were voting. The issue of what the state statute said was probably before, it was difficult, but that's not. And so there was just, for the law, she'd want to, and then some, because the tip. At all was at issue. So sure, join the party. Giving deference to, than its settlement.
Window P for projection.
Projection, got you.
I don't, yeah, she's out of town.
I didn't realize some of these positions.
Yes.
Kitchen layout here, as far as if you want coffee or any water.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
All right, how about you? How was the trip?
It was awesome. Did we ever pick a date for our next? Mm-hmm, not yet, okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it.
No.
Okay, cool. 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 I thought so.
Oh, you didn't miss it.
I get so many emails, I wanted to make sure I didn't miss someone.
I'm sure doing that, I'm thrilled.
It's good to have you on board too, here.
All righty, folks. If I get folks to begin to take their seats, we're going to get started just in a second.
Wouldn't have been walking into your office, yes. Sorry. What are you doing? Here, do you have the voting thing? I must try to put petition up before, before. I'm not against it, but.
All righty, folks. Like to call this meeting back to order. Welcome back. We're on the council strategic planning discussion. Manager Wolfe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, good evening. I'll be very quick, try to get us out of here. Continue the positive momentum of this evening and talk a little bit about big picture strategic planning. So this is a continuation of discussion that we had at orientation. I appreciate the thoughtful discussion that we had. This proposal before you this evening hopes to capture that discussion and some of the comments that were made and make sure that we're all on the same page and hopefully can move our strategic planning process forward together in some way. So I know that initially, our timeline was aggressive. We wanted to, we suggested to do strategic planning in the month of December. There was some concern with the holidays and not having a seventh, what will be a seventh member of council after January as a part of that conversation. So related to that and then having a tight turnaround for staff to develop an initial framework. We took that back and revised the proposed concept and the timeline. And so I'll just briefly touch on a few things and hopefully gain some feedback and consensus this evening. So proposed concept is essentially to take some of the initial steps in teeing up the strategic plan discussion in-house. So one of my roles for the city over the last year, better part of the year, is to work with our director team on developing a strategic plan. And so some of this, in terms of the process, I'm very familiar with. And so the suggestion would be essentially to work with each of you individually and then as a group to set an initial framework that would be brought to council for discussion. That essentially would tee up a larger facilitated and outside facilitator facilitated retreat. So what we discussed at orientation was that trying to fit all of this in in four or eight hours was probably impossible. And I certainly agree with that. And so what this pre-work would do is I'd get a sense of kind of the goals, your overall goals. Again, we're focused on the big picture here, not so much individual projects, but what's your vision for the community, that type of thing, in the context of what's already in place. What documents already exist for council as guiding documents for, whether it's your comp plan, your comprehensive plan, Parks and Rec master plan and others that set out cultural arts plan, that set out certain goals. And so what are those goals? What have we set our community-wide goals? How are we approaching those? And hopefully bring us to a point where the discussion makes a lot more sense for a facilitator, makes a lot more sense for you and the public as you look towards a retreat. And so suggestion here for proposed timeline is slowing this down a bit, but also trying to make this relevant for the budget process. As I mentioned back at your orientation, the important part about having a strategic plan in place for the budget process is that it informs the decisions that we make in terms of bringing a budget to you. And so having your input on what the big picture goals are helps a lot in terms of bringing a budget that meets the needs of you and this community. So what this outline does is slow down some of the initial steps, allows for this information gathering period of time to occur in December and January. So I'm able to meet with each of you. And I'm also hopefully able to meet with whomever this council decides is the next seventh member of this body, capture their goals and bring that framework back in January for a staff-led facilitated session. That could be a part of a study session. I'd recommend it kind of being split out separately so it could be a bit more informal. It could be on the same evening, just a continuation of the meeting or another evening that you schedule. That would lead us into some type of community input that needs to be defined. We were thinking a little bit more electronic. Again, that doesn't capture everybody, so perhaps there's some in-person meetings, activities that we could do. I'm also sensitive to not overburdening the public with community engagement, community engagement. If we do, it should be meaningful and thought out. Hopefully, that would allow us sometime in February, probably later in February, to have a retreat together. That would be a facilitated, so an outside facilitator would handle that with everything that we've done. So that's the community piece of that. That's the framework that you've come up with, that initial strategy session. All the information that I've gathered individually would lead into that more formal retreat. And then you'd have an initial draft out of that, that hopefully you could discuss, tweak, and finally adopt. If that were to happen sometime in April, that would be enough time for us to be able to utilize in our budget process as departments are finalizing their budgets and ultimately the city manager is putting together a budget to present to all of you. So this slows down the timeline a bit. It also still allows us to have this be relevant for the budget, which frankly is the most important policy document that you all adopt. So happy to take additional feedback tonight. Ultimately, guidance on two issues would be important. One is on the timeline itself. And then two, whether or not we've essentially captured this concept and have the green light to move this forward with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell?
So what would be the purpose of meeting individually with all of us council members rather than doing it in a public, open session?
So it would essentially be to, I think, try and maximize our time, knowing that to go person by person and try to do a longer session, I think we'd have to schedule a half-day or full-day session separately. We could certainly do that. That's an alternative. My goal would not be to try and steer the conversation so much as to synthesize all of the individual goal discussions at a high level and then have that discussion with that framework in public as a part of a larger session. So the steps would be the individual meetings, the staff-led facilitated discussion, and then your retreat later. The latter two would be certainly out in the public. And all of my notes and synthesis of our meetings would be public, in a public document.
So, I mean, is it possible to do questionnaires so council can fill those out and do that? I mean, I think public open meetings are much better and open, so that's my opinion.
Yes, and I certainly appreciate that. My plan was to develop some type of standard questions to start from. So it's not just a broad discussion. That'd be more, okay, here's the framework. Let's talk through that, make sure that I have a good understanding of what your main goals are, and then bring that back for a discussion in public and write all of that out.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez?
I had similar questions as well, just wondering about the kind of format of the questions, if we are going to be provided with what you're looking for exactly or if we should just come to the conversation with our ideas, just general ideas. And then after that, are you going to be looking for themes that you find from many of us and that will help start the framework or?
Yeah, so what I would do is capture the main themes. That would be the overall goal of the discussions. The framework essentially would be giving you some materials. So what are the high-level goals of some of your larger, your larger master plans that are already in existence and adopted by council? You'd have the ability to access what's already on our website for our organizational strategic plan and then essentially ask you some questions about the community-wide goals. So our eight goals that guide our budget process. Pretty high level, but again, just trying to essentially get your sense on what are the top priorities? What's missing? What needs to be changed? And then hopefully that would help get it, once I have a sense of kind of what the big picture goals are, that would help understand what facilitation is necessary going forward. Instead of having it be so broad that it takes us forever to get anywhere.
Right, and I get the question of timing. It would be a lengthy meeting for all of us to participate in that. What I don't want to miss out on is hearing information from other council members, something maybe they have a goal that I hadn't thought of or, you know, that's kind of the benefit of the seven of us. So I want to make sure we somehow are able to have that information shared with us in total so we are all kind of knowing the same information. And then as far as the timeline, I like the timeline a lot. I'm just wondering if the, since our January is also very packed with all of our interviews and things, if we could have that be towards the second half of the January?
Yeah, that's what I, just to put that back up there. Absolutely, that staff-led facilitated session would be at the end of January is what I was thinking.
You, Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. I'd like to first thank the city manager and his staff for revising your proposed schedule of the planning in such short order. I know that work like this doesn't take, you know, it's quite involved. And you're trying to align for a lot of people and a lot of different processes. So thank you for doing this and representing us with something to consider. Secondly, I want to say that from experience, I have been involved with these types of individual meetings in a different context, of course, beforehand. And the findings from the meetings tend to be synthesized and shared out. So, or, not synthesized too much, but the information is shared. So the council member Martinez, so we could have some understanding of what each of us said. But the result is typically, almost always, that the meeting facilitators can run a much more focused, tremendously focused meeting. So I've seen them work extremely well is what I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. I too want to do, thank staff for just sort of stepping up to the plate and helping us improve this process. I think this is, you know, better than what we did when this council, or when the previous council sort of started. I, you know, I felt like what the previous council did was a step up from what the previous council did. So I feel like this is sort of taking it to the next level. I love the idea of formal adoption. I love the idea of outside facilitator and/or staff-led discussions. I kind of like the idea of, you know, meeting one-on-one to try to get as much as we can out of that. And I agree, I understand Councilmember Russell's concern. And I think that if we do it like Cheryl sort of described in that staff does a relatively good job of encapsulating that and obviously we'll have a chance to say, hey, that wasn't right, or hey, I meant this, or whatever it might be at our more formal meeting. But that still, I think, gives us a substantial leg up in that conversation. I also love the public feedback portion of that. I mean, these were elements that we were missing. And this is such an important thing for a council, especially early on in the process. So again, I just really want to applaud you for doing that. And I also, again, another friendly reminder to not forget past themes and goals through this process. So, you know, as you guys are consolidating that, I would appreciate it if one of the, you know, factors or inputs was previous as well as obviously all of the current members. Councilmember Berantone?
I would agree with Councilmember Martinez. I think that if we could push some of the information gathering so that it at least includes that other member, we know they're coming. It's not like, let's see, somebody got arrested or somebody died. We're the previous two. That's not the case this time. We know.
Thank you.
Nor did they arrest anybody else, so that's not. But since we have an opportunity to plan for this one and we know that they're coming, then I don't want to pass by that there's some information gathering and that there's some of that synergy and that piece of that process with that person because it's a little team-building as well to have that hashed out. So if we could just move it down just a little bit, and the fact that January is pretty packed. We're not doing anything in the beginning of January except picking people and we're barely over our, we've barely broken our resolutions before we're trying to just be here every single night. So if we could just move it down just a little bit more so that that information gathering. And then councilman, I apologize. I just realized. Not one time tonight have I acknowledged that you are the mayor pro tem, and I apologize for that. Mayor Pro Tem Russell. Mayor Pro Tem Russell. Brought up as well that I think the public input is a really significant piece of this, but if we could just move this down just a little bit more so that we include that other member, and we may have some being brought in so that we're not cutting somebody off who, obviously, you don't generally have people who want to be, apply for that position, who aren't already in some way either involved in an issue, concerned about the city, or have been participating in some way, and I would really like to make sure that we get that feedback and that input and that synergy going to. Otherwise, I share what Mayor Jefferson said, that I really appreciate the work that you guys have done, and I think that this is moving it up a little, and also would like to include, we didn't do, we worked on it for a whole two years practically. I don't, I share your concern. We don't want to lose the work that was done previously and bring some of that focus and skills, and kind of like the city manager bringing some of the questions that the press asked, whether they were good questions or not, but at least there's some things that you could go, hey, this is what's already been done, and maybe we could incorporate that in, and I think that would be a good idea, so thank you very much, and very nice job.
Thanks, and I do want to reiterate that it was my intention to include the seventh, the new seventh council member in the initial information gathering, and I can bump the timeline a bit to make sure that January isn't too crazy for everybody. In terms of community engagement, I do have one question. So we have our budget sessions, our budget workshops, and obviously that would need to be tweaked. We were planning on bringing a little bit more of a yearly plan for community engagement as a part of our discussion on events in December. In order to tee that up a bit, is there any particular consensus on council as to, for the strategic planning, community engagement component? Are you comfortable with only electronic type of engagement, the community survey and others, or would you like to see some in-person sessions as well?
I think maybe it would help us in this discussion if you told us about what you have on deck and see if any of those could be combined. You mentioned, can you give me an idea of what you got on deck?
Sure, so I think the major question is, we had our budget workshops, and I think for our first attempt at it, they went pretty well. I would say that overall, they are more, they were more geared this last year towards this kind of visioning and big picture, as opposed to the details of the budget, and so I think both are important in some way, that visioning for the community and for also understanding our budget picture and to understand what's in the proposed budget for the following year. So I think there's two different things there. That being said, I understand if you have eight community engagement sessions, it's unlikely that, you know, you get a wide representation. So I think there's a way to do both.
Budgeting thing coming back in February, that's a little more macro or micro, is that a fair statement?
So the budgeting workshops last year were in June, and there were four sessions. I think that was pretty good timing. We wouldn't want to push that back any further if we wanted to include the community engagement input into the budget. So that was one of the reasons for having them in June. It was kind of our last chance to inform what came ultimately was proposed to the council. So the idea for these sessions would be to be in February or perhaps into early March if we bumped the timeline back a bit, and the question is, what do those sessions look like if they're in person?
Thank you. May I just check, you have something to add?
Yeah, Mayor, and I was going to indicate too, as it's shown there in February, doing a community survey, we are in the throes right now of putting together the National Citizen Survey again. Many of you may recall that we've executed that instrument in the past. We need to do that again. I think it's the time, timing is right to do the NCS, and so we've been talking to the National Research Center in Boulder right now about getting prepared to send that out. The interesting thing for this year is that we will offer the public, and it's, again, it's a scientifically selected survey of 1,500 residents, I think it's 1,500, the ability for persons to also respond electronically. Now, you obviously have seen a greater return in the past with paper surveys, and you can still do that, but if somebody wants to do a digital, do it on the web, they can do it on the web as well. So that's going to happen late January, early February as well, and then we should have results fairly quickly, once that survey closes, to again, be able to compare the data too that we received for the 18 survey versus, I think the last one that was done was 14, and then 12, and then, you know, I don't know how many others they're done. I think I've only seen the 12 and 14 data, but-
Keep in mind, we had the telephone survey-
Correct.
-from the bond issue that I think fits in line with that.
It does, yeah.
Councilmember Beretta.
Well, in the past, the surveys that we've done, that's less than 1% of the people that are, that we're doing, and then when you do 50% of the people who were surveyed, you're talking about 150 people that are, I mean, so we have to be careful in putting this information together.
Sure.
And I think, I don't know, at one time it was like $26,000, I don't, we have to, we have to see how we're going to do those kind of questions and what is we're doing, and I think the piece that's missing is a little bit of what you guys are addressing now, which is appreciated. I think that the meetings, and I think I went to three of the four budget meetings, and they weren't, they weren't really budget meetings, I mean, they were kind of, you know, your hopes and dreams, a little information, a little getting some information out, so I think doing that piece now, a little bit more toward February, and then creating some information that later on in June, you're actually telling people, instead of gossip or, you know, people kind of coming with some ideas of they're going to do this or they're going to do that, that by that time, we have a little bit more handle on exactly some budget information to provide to the public to get that feedback from on real issues. I mean, you had a lot of people attend the one at Malle Center because there was rumors that we were going to, I don't know, shut them down, burn it. I don't know what they thought we were going to do, but a lot of people showed up pretty angry and upset and wanted to leave the minute you said, we're not, all your gossip stuff really isn't true, and they went, oh, well, I can go home now. Well, so if we're pushing that piece of it, the kind of more hopes and dreams, what are some ideas, the creativity that you had in those sessions, I think was worthwhile, but people went walking away going, this isn't really budget stuff. I mean, so if we're looking at like, what's important, what are some ideas that came out of that and I thought it was worthwhile, I just would, I agree with you, I think it needs to happen earlier in the year, and then by June, that we are actually putting out some, here are the issues we're facing, here are some of the decisions we're looking at, here are some of the conversations that need to happen, should be happening around June, and I would like to have the public involved in that, but in real issues, not trying to skirt away from, that if we've got some tough decisions to make, that we're having that conversation at that time. So I appreciate that you're looking at pushing that forward. I'm not saying it wasn't worthwhile, it just wasn't really a budget-type issue, but it was creative, and it got people thinking about the services and what's going on, so it's very beneficial, and I appreciate that you're putting it early this time, and then hopefully, out of that, I assume what you're trying to create is earlier to get to the real meat and bones of what's going on and the actual discussions that have to happen on where we're at by June, we should have a fairly good idea to start getting that done, so I appreciate that you're moving this forward and that we don't feel, there's no reason that we should be, feel rushed this time at the end of it, and I really appreciate that you guys are taking that to heart and doing it early, moving this a little farther ahead, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez.
I was just going to say, along those same lines, in getting the most engagement from our community as possible, I wonder, and I don't know when the deadline is, but maybe we could include a link to the survey in our citizen magazine, so at least it gets to every household, so people can at least get it and have access to that link, and maybe the information dates when we're going to do in-person feedback, so at least everyone in the community gets that one piece of communication, knowing when-
Yep.
...back is welcomed.
We got it already. I think what we're hearing is, you know, one council member saying, physical meeting is better, and I think what you're kind of saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is, hey, electronic works fine for something like this.
Well, I'm saying both, actually, and I'm saying, can, just want to make sure that it's in the citizen magazines, that at least it gets mailed to every household, and not just a select 1,500. Okay.
So I think we're hearing both.
Don't misunderstand, I wasn't disagreeing that we shouldn't do a survey, but we need to make sure it's worth our while. Some of the feedback and I think some of the lack of participation seemed like it was just gearing people toward, you know, yes, everybody loves the city or they wouldn't live here. So let's see if we can make it a little bit more useful on, a little bit more of the style that you were trying to use those meetings in June, where it's kind of maybe some kind of creativity, more thought-provoking, more informational for us than whether it's just a good or bad report card for the city. I don't know that that's as useful, and we've had such a low amount of, I mean, I don't think I've ever seen one that had more than 350 people participate, even in the written ones, and we have been told by survey professionals that that's a very good return. Well, if that's a very good return, I talked to more people than that when I ran for, I'm pretty sure Dave and Cheryl both talked to more people than that. So if we could kind of incorporate something where we can be, maybe think how to side the box on how to better use that to kind of get to some of the things, create, more creative things, like what you guys were trying to do as a start for it, or a report card in the middle or end of it, whichever we decide we want it to be.
Okay, now I'm hearing both, both a physical meeting and a survey, and, you know, and I don't want to go too far down this national survey, that's for another night, for another discussion, and, you know, there's plenty of open-ended discussions in the scientific process that we go through for that, so I don't want to get too far into the weeds on that. Is everybody okay? I think staff was recommending simply a survey, an electronic survey. I think I'm hearing from council, they would like to have both an electronic survey as well as a physical meeting. Anybody, everybody okay with that? Excellent. If you need more direction, feel free to come back on that. Any last comments on this?
No, I think I have adequate direction, a green light. I'll look for my email, I'll try to get with all of this group in December, early January, and obviously the new seventh member after that.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll move us on to city members' choice. Would anyone like to kick us off this evening?
Councilmember Beretta, thank you.
I saw the accessory dwelling unit, open house report in here, and I wanted to know, since it was part of our newsletter, how did this get, is this publicly available easily? Could we make sure it's on the front page so that people know, and then we need to know what the next piece of this is going to be. We're going to have to decide, I heard, I mean, it was so well-attended, and I'm really glad that the conversation is happening, and I realize there's people on both sides that want to push it and just go ahead and either get it yay or nay right away, but because of so many people attending, there's obviously a lot of interest in this, and we want to make sure that we flush it out, and there was a big push for people to go, they kept asking me, it took me a half hour to get from the door to this door, just so many people were talking to me on their way, excited about what was going on and having questions, and very consistently, they were asking, what's the next step? When are we going to find out this information and have it discussed? And so there was some concern on both sides that the information would be disseminated somewhat publicly with feedback and questions and feedback being done all at one time. Oops, sorry. So if we could consider that, or at least have some discussion on that, because I'm very successful, I'm glad that we did that. And then I attended the, I would suggest to the new members and anybody who hasn't had an opportunity to do this, I regularly attend and watch other city council meetings, and it is always interesting to see that I had the privilege, and I have for the last four or five elections, attended the Littleton Council swearing-in as well, and so congratulations to Deb Brinkman, Mayor Brinkman, and their mayor pro tem, Jerry Valdez, but it's always interesting to see how somebody else does it. It's like when you have kids and they go to somebody else's house and they come back and go, they served the best meal ever, and you go, what'd you serve my kid? And they go, meatloaf, and you go, ah, it's just that it was different, the, you know, you see how somebody else conducts their house, or how process and procedures happen, so it's always interesting. And that's why I always kind of laughed when people said, oh, your council and dysfunction, and I go, you haven't been to a Parker meeting ever to see what was going on, so, or Aurora or Centennial, where actually there was some gunplay and some, at one point at one of their meetings, and some concealed carry issues going on, so fortunately, we've never gone down that road. But there were some interesting things when you see the way somebody else handles functions like that. So congratulations to their new leadership. I did congratulate them, representing, told them that we were very fortunate to have worked with the outgoing council as well, so for our partnerships. And then question, there has been a question on the legality of the motion made by council member, then council member Yates and Gillett on us having all of our regular and special meetings available on, via phone, and I would suggest that we undertake this issue. One, I brought it up, I don't think it was vetted all the way, I want everybody to think about it, is that the issue of the executive sessions, executive sessions can only happen in a regular meeting, by law, they can only happen in a regular meeting, so by saying that we would have phone for every regular meeting is already kind of getting that a little dicey. Second, an executive session has no requirement for notice, there is no requirement for that. If we decide to go into an executive session to gain legal advice, that's what we do when we vote at the time, there actually is no requirement to notice an executive session. It is nice that the public knows, it's nice that council knows, but there actually isn't a requirement. So if we could go ahead and get some of those questions answered, I am not, and think, have, really think we should take ourselves to task, what was said by the city attorney and the orientation, that we not rely on her or put her in a position to go ahead and be some kind of arbiter or rule-maker, or what was it? We're waiting for a ruling. We don't get rulings, we get advice from our city attorney, and there are very specific legal procedures, and us getting that advice as a council, all is one, so I want to give her an opportunity to take a look at that, since I think the motion is actually, would violate that ability in doing that. Second, in looking at any of the ones that have, any of the bodies, because there are some that aren't councils, that have done phone work, they were not reinventing the word "present," and I would like for us to consider staying away from either qualifying or identifying or reinventing the word "present" itself, and either deciding to make a very active move to go ahead and allow it, and then allow it rather than try and reinvent the word "present," as I'm sure some people have made quite a few jokes about our judge-elect on whether he is going to accept what somebody being president in his court or not, but if we could stay away from the need, because I don't think the other bodies that have done this felt the need to reinvent or qualify the word "present" in order to do what they did. So if we're going to do this, then I would prefer to stay away from the muddying the waters of our charter and the other 93 places where it shows up in our ordinances and potentially messing that up, and either actively allow it and have a discussion and contemplate the unintended consequences and make a decision through some kind of public process on whether we do that or not, rather than have it happen the way that it's happened. So if I could have the city attorney just take a look at that, and we could have this up for discussion next meeting, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Costa.
Yes, sir, and I don't want to do all that issue for too long, but my understanding is we were going to revisit that during the policies discussion.
Do you want to use microphone?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I apologize. It's my, no. Sorry, I apologize.
Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Cohen. My understanding is we were going to revisit that issue during the policies discussion?
Yes.
And you guys have all been so busy, I don't know if you've even managed to look at the policy manual I handed out to you, but the very last draft policy is on telephonic participation, and it provides a, basically, I pulled together what several other cities have done and put some- some version of a draft in there for you all to review, and you all to make choices on what's best for this governing body. And I also have to say, I appreciate that councilmember Berentine stated what she did. I'm an attorney. I use words that are French, Latin, English, and they don't mean what you understand them to mean because you open a dictionary. If you want to know the legal meanings, you have to go to the Blacks Legal Dictionary. So it's terms of art, and every profession has its terms of art. So it's, it always feels like a couple of different conversations, and it would, and I'm looking forward to you guys having the opportunity to discuss this as a body and use the draft that I presented as a starting place, but come up with what works best for you. So whenever you're ready to have that conversation, I've given you a starting place.
And I was thinking December? We had that somewhere on the docket in December?
The policies discussion we talked about last week is a high priority item for us. And I agree, I think that would be part of that discussion.
Sure. And certainly worth the deliberation, no doubt about it. On a lighter note.
Members' choice here.
Conclude.
Member Costa, please continue on, and, you know, feel free to go on to your members' choice. You conceded the floor to councilmember Costa. Moving on to councilmember Costa. If you want to go back, here, please, councilmember Berentine, please, councilmember Berentine, please conclude, and then we'll move on to councilmember Costa.
The only concern with trying to do it with the policies and procedures is that we have other council meetings coming up in the meantime, and I want to make sure that we have clear direction so the public understands how we're conducting business. There is still a concern in several people that brought it to me again, that they believe that we're violating the charter. And so we need to have some discussion amongst this council. We have gotten some advice from the city attorney and some information, but not a decision. And so I think that still needs to be flushed out. So I would, again, ask that it just be put onto the agenda for the city council meeting so that we have that discussion in public. And congratulations to our two new members for your first official full meeting. Thank you very much. I think everything went very well, except for him trying, yeah.
Excuse me?
Never conceding to you again.
Understood. Thank you.
For real, I'm giving you the mic.
Thank you.
On that lighter note, I'm really looking forward to the parade on Saturday, as well as the tree lighting, as are my five and two-year-olds, as well as the Bellevue Park train celebration that they're going to have. Everybody's really excited. I know several people might have heard who bought tickets. I think that was very ingenious and a good use in the off-season of the train in Inglewood Park. So looking forward to it, and I bet in a few weeks I'll be thanking everybody for it as well, and certainly looking forward to the telephone discussion also. And I will now concede to whoever is next.
Go to councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. While we're on the topic of telephone discussions, I just want to share my perspective on kind of what transpired from my point of view. When I booked the trip, I had several things in mind. Obviously, all of us have family members, we have primary jobs, we have other responsibilities outside of council. My primary thought was to make sure my stepdaughter did not miss school, and that I was able to take off work, and my husband was able to take off work. So that was why we chose that date. I know it was a conflict with this last meeting, which was unfortunate. But I just want to really thank the members of council who wanted me to participate and supported that discussion. I was really happy that I was able to participate in the beginning part of the discussion. When I lost service, our ship, we were on a cruise, and our ship was scheduled to be in Cabo San Lucas for two days. And so I assumed the ship would maintain its position through those two days. So I didn't think it was an issue. When I lost service, I was like, oh, no, oh, no. Started texting, calling, didn't get any service, went and asked, and they had to move the ship throughout the night. So that's why I lost service, and we had to come back to that same position the next day. So I apologize for losing service. I wish I would have remained for the duration of that meeting. But I appreciate council's courtesy in allowing me to participate, and staff for helping to bring that technical stuff to fruition. And thank you, Mayor Jefferson, for calling me back and trying to make sure that I was able to participate. I really appreciate that. Also, congratulations to Mayor Jefferson and Mayor Pro Tem Russell. I think that was a great decision for us, and I'm really supportive of that. Also, welcome to our new members and returning member Olson. I'm really excited to work together with this council. Also, congratulations, Mayor, on your new position as judge. Looking forward to working together, looking forward to our policy discussions and procedure discussions. I think that's going to be really great. I'm really looking forward to that together. And the last KEB meeting, we had a great brainstorming session on what's been working well, what new initiatives we want to undertake in 2018. It was really great. That group is so active and enthusiastic. We also, they gave us some statistics on the leaf and tire event, which I don't know if any of you were able to participate in, but the first weekend, we had about 300 carloads of Leafs and tires dropped off, and the second weekend was about the same. So that was really exciting. That was a really great turnout. And we also have our holiday lighting event coming up. So if anyone decorates their house, or know anyone who would like to participate in that, there is a form you can fill out. And our next meeting later in December, we will be judging the lighting. Also, I don't know, I'm sure you guys have heard that the parks are auctioning off their old park signs, which is pretty cool. The bids are pretty active, and that closes on the 30th. So if you're interested in that, get your bids in. I've already been outbid a couple times, so I will be submitting some more bids for you soon.
Excellent. You're bidding on, I hope you're.
Okay. Yeah, don't bid on the ones I want.
Stop, you guys are just trying to raise up.
Manager Keck, does that include some of our, you know, more contemporary signs, like the sign that we took from council chambers?
Doug Cohen's already agreed to buy that for $10,000.
Excellent, excellent. I'm glad to see we've gotten top dollar for that.
Budget's looking better already, my friend.
Councilmember Russell, members' choice.
Actually, I just want to thank all of you for making this meeting run so smoothly. It's been very good. And I do want to congratulate Dave and Cheryl on their election, and it's great to have you on board. Congratulate you, also Mayor Jefferson, as the judge-elect. And I do hope that our schedule will work out so that we can participate in your swearing-in, because I think it's just really the next step for this council. So, and I do have one other question. Do you know who, do we contract out with drivers for the Art Bus? Because there was a complaint this last week, an older person was walking up to the bus, I think here at City Center, and started hurrying because the bus was going to leave, and the bus driver let him get within six feet of the bus and saw him and took off. And, you know, when we have members that are senior or struggling, I think that is really inappropriate.
I can answer that. So the city does have a contract with the Inglewood Trolley. We can't call it the Art Bus anymore, formerly known as the Art Bus. And it is MV Transportation. And I am happy to take that issue back to our staff liaison who works with MV and let them know that happened, and that's unacceptable.
And I mean, I can get you probably the bus number.
Yeah, that'd be, that would be great. I appreciate that, so I can be more specific with the managers at MV to let them know that that transpired and that we don't want to tolerate that.
Okay.
And I appreciate letting us know that, because we do need to help hold our vendors and our contractors accountable for, you know, such activity like that.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought it was Leyd Law.
No, it's MV, MV Transportation.
How long have they had it? Or is it the same people changed their name?
No, they've been MV for a very long time. And MV Transportation, since I've been here for three years, they've had the contract.
Is that right, Doug?
He used to work for MV.
MV bought out Leyd Law.
Go to the expert.
There you go.
The history guy. So, but they probably were the same. Okay, I just wondered.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor's Choice, I do have just a couple quick things. September 8th, you know, do contemplate a special meeting for the judges swearing-in. I guess I'm just going to suggest a six to seven for an hour of council's time to be involved with that swearing-in.
January.
January, what did I say?
September.
Jeez, it's getting late. Sorry. Yeah, January 8th.
It isn't done till it's done.
So January 8th, at, my thought is six to 7:00 PM, and then, you know, either, I guess we can decide whether we feel like we need to just begin the study session after that, or if the future, if the council wants to begin their study session after that, or if they want to try to squeeze it in prior post. Any feedback on that?
I'm confused with what you just said.
Oh, I'm saying, you know, you guys might want to go back and reconvene your study session.
On the 8th, we have a meeting on the 8th, right? That's Monday. So we come here and, at 6:00, and what were you proposing to do?
My suggestion is a special meeting for one hour, and then either...
From 6:00 to 7:00?
Correct. And then begin the study session at 7:00. Or if this council, you know, was so tight and we found out that we really needed to use a half hour, maybe you guys could do a study session from 5:30 to 6:00, and then, you know, go to this special meeting. But I think the plan would be, more generally, would be to start the study session post the special meeting.
And the special meeting being?
The swearing-in.
The swearing-in?
Yes.
Does it have to be a special, oh, it would be a, he doesn't have to be sworn in at a meeting.
No.
He could be sworn in in the park.
You guys don't want to be part of this process, you don't have to be, you know?
But, so we don't actually have to have a special meeting. We could just set aside the time for him to go ahead and be sworn in.
Yeah.
And I would only say, here's...
My thought is that the council might want to be a part of that process, but I'm open to your feedback.
They might, unless you take this mic away from it. No, I'm kidding.
Which I just might do. Don't tempt me, young lady, it's late, you know?
So what I would really like to do, since you've been part of this council for over 10 years, is I would like to start the study session and at least have that be, us as the council, and then have you sworn in during that meeting. I don't think that that's a problem. I would kind of like that, to see that transition piece of it. I think it would be kind of cool. And it could be right after we, I mean, we don't really do anything formally here except for sit, and you could sit there as the mayor for the last time, and then we could all go ahead and let you be sworn in at that time. And I would kind of think that that would be a nice way to do it.
You know, I'm open to that suggestion if others support that. My thought was a separate room, not in necessarily in the study session.
We could do, we could do a study session in the...
Regular chambers or council chambers.
We can do a study session.
And again, do it from 6:00 to 7:00.
We can actually do a study session in the council meeting. When you're judge, you can interrupt all those people you want, not yet.
I'm also the presiding officer of this meeting, ma'am.
I thought we could have it, I thought we could go ahead and have it in the council room, if that's okay. The, I think that would be nice. Just begin the meeting as a study session there, and just have the study session in there. Bring it in, start the meeting, and then have you sworn in.
Thank you. Others want to weigh in on this? Councilmember Martinez?
I was just going to say, I think it is going to be important for us to kind of shift you to your next position, and I think it would be cool to be a part of that. And I absolutely think it should be in that room and not in this room.
See, it's cool when she says it.
I'm cool.
Any others want to weigh in on this? So, you know, I'll be announcing a special meeting in our next regular meeting, and I'll hash out some of these details and be submitting a resignation letter along with it to highlight all of these sort of details that we'll flush out in our next meeting. Second thing I wanted to chat about was our Christmas party. Did you have an issue, councilmember Berentine?
No. I don't want to look at you.
I'm sorry?
I'm all right, I'm fine.
Okay. The Christmas party, you know, historically, we've done this on the second meeting in December. Is there an issue? What was the problem there? The second meeting in December is generally, we have our Christmas party on December 18th. You know, historically, we've done it from, I believe, 5:30 to about 7:15. You know, we've changed our meeting times to 7:00 PM now. So I guess the suggestion from me would be, let's start dinner at 5:30 and go to 5:45, and then come and convene the regular meeting at 7:00. Last year, we did our Christmas party at Steakhouse 10. You know, I would suggest we stay there unless anybody goes, anybody's got some suggestion on that, but I just want to coordinate with staff to get that all nailed down this week. Anybody have any feelings on that?
Works for me.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody objecting, I'm going to put that together for us, okay?
And it's 6:45, right? 5:30 to 6:45?
Correct.
Okay.
That gives us 15 minutes to get over there and get started with this meeting, hopefully on time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, I guess, just a final reminder on the parade and holiday lighting. I believe the parade starts at 4:00, staging at 3:00, the Christmas lighting at 5:20. So feel free to join us. Great event last year. I think we've got more business participation, the Christmas village. I think this is going to turn into a really nice event, and the weather is cooperating. We're getting lucky again on our special event weather, which is always a great thing. So, city managers' choice.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to bring up the 18th, because I was trying to get some consensus as to what we're doing, but it sounds like it's moving in that direction. Herefore, we were talking about bringing, potentially bringing in, like Bob Widener to talk to you about council policy, decorum. And I had reached out to him a long while ago, and he had held that date. So kind of would like to know, again, the consensus of this group, if you want to deal with that, or you just want to try to have a regular business meeting that night. Again, we don't want to lose the opportunity to begin talking about policy and procedures, so.
Okay, so your suggestion is a different night for the holiday party?
Potentially, but I don't, I want this group to decide that, but I, you were asking councilmembers and not staff at last, so.
No, fair enough. Anybody want to meet with Bob instead on the 18th, instead of dinner? Councilmember Martinez?
I think the meeting with this gentleman would be really important, and especially since he has held the date, I think that's really important. And I think our schedules are probably more flexible than his schedule, so I would be happy, I don't know what everyone's availability is like, but maybe on a weekend or a different evening that week for dinner.
Would Bob be addressing this telephonic issue? Probably not, right? It's more of the, here we will be?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so hearing that, maybe the preference then is to stick with Bob. So he'll be here at 6:00 to 7:30, is that what he's penciled in right now?
Probably longer.
Sorry. Probably longer than that, Mayor, I think.
We have a regular meeting that night, don't we?
You, typically, that's the schedule. But again, this council has the ability under the charter to say how they're going to utilize their time and...
So what are you suggesting?
Well, I think what we had tried to do was, again, hold that time and that date for you to have an in-depth policy discussion.
Schedule the regular meeting?
In lieu of the regular meeting. We've actually, yeah, we've actually tried to move a lot of our contracts and things that need to come before the city council to the 11th, or pushed into, pushed into January 2nd. So that's where we've been thus far, but again, that's for this council to decide.
Anybody have any feelings on that, councilmember Berentine?
Well, then we're using the study session time, what we would normally use for the study session time, and we're using the actual meeting for this. Why does that not work? If we have the, if we have the dinner during this, what we would normally be the study session time, then we haven't caused...
You certainly could. I'm not saying you, I'm not saying you couldn't do that, I'm not saying he couldn't come at 7:00. I'm just saying I need more than just an hour to get through the topics that he needs to get through, so.
And you think his schedule's pretty tight, huh?
It's a pretty aggressive, I mean, you have to...
I just feel like that's a tall order for us to reschedule a meeting. I mean, I just feel like, I mean, don't get me wrong, if Bob's that busy, then, you know, maybe, but I just feel like, you know, we've got seven elected officials, a couple of executives here, I mean, I just, you know, the idea of rescheduling that much to have a guest speaker seems a little much.
So, well, again, he was flexible. He said he's available from 6:00 to whenever, you know, to come in and meet, and...
And about what time, about the timeframe for his presentation? Is he looking for about two hours?
Probably two to three hours.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we had it from 7:00?
Yeah, I mean, you could probably pull that off.
6:30 to, we could probably do 6:30 to 9:30 then, if he got done earlier, if that's what we wanted to do that night, and still have the dinner before that if that's...
Sure. That's completely up to the council.
Or maybe we could combine the two events. I mean, we could cater in here or something if that was council's desire, and make the first half hour a social hour for us, and then move on to Bob.
Okay.
Bob's presentation. Yeah. Rather than trying to choose another day for our holiday party, given their scheduling, and I love you guys, don't get me wrong, I just feel like, given as many, you know, commitments as we're asking for everybody, I feel like another meeting just for the dinner is a kind of a tall order. Combining the two, I saw some heads nodding. You guys okay with that? Turn for that? I don't know if Steakhouse 10 is going to cater this event, you know, we might have to consider some options, yeah.
I want the fire thing if he comes here.
Plating cheese? Yeah. We'll see what we can do. We'll look at some catering options for this event, and maybe think about a 5 to, you know, 5, you know, 5:30 to 6:00 kind of reception, or, you know, could we start at 5:30 that night, or is that too early? Is everybody okay with a 5:30 start? Okay. We'll hash out some of these details at mayor-manager this week, which will be starting this week, so, note, you know, and I just want to get clarity, I guess, we are recording this meeting. My thought is, since it's kind of, I think, subject to some dynamic scheduling right now, I'm going to suggest it's not notice-posted, right? Because we don't know exactly when. Not open to the public, but it will be recorded for the public's benefit. Is that everybody's understanding?
No.
No? What do you have?
I mean, you only have to have notification for a public meeting 24 hours. I mean, come on, if you guys don't know 24 hours. So unless you guys are just roaming around the city and you go, you're it, like we're all playing musical chairs, I mean, you have enough time. I don't, I certainly, there is nothing that violates the open meeting or sunshine law to go ahead and not have this meeting at a regular time. I understand that, and all you need is the 24 hours. But if you're going to record it, and the possibility of anybody else showing up, I think it's important that it is noticed.
Thank you. Others' feelings on this? I think the fine line here is probably, is the public welcome to attend this meeting? Should it be notice-posted or not? I think we had consensus on recording, unless somebody's got some other feelings on that.
That includes the dinner as well?
No, sorry, we're on to a new topic here. This is the mayor-manager meeting, which this week, just for everybody's benefit, is kind of penciled in at 4:00 on Wednesday. And so, but again, knowing that it might change week to week, candidly, my preference, I think, is to not notice-post it. That way, that gives us that flexibility to change things at the last minute if we want, and not feel like we have to honor a public meeting, you know, for, if we don't have any business to tend to. So that's my thought. It just adds that flexibility, and there's still that level of transparency with the recording. Do others want to weigh in on this?
It isn't just the public. It is the opportunity for a third council member to come, and that's the reason that it would be recorded. That's what triggered the recording before, was because it was public, because a third council member showed up. And so I, I don't think that there's, I don't think we had a hard time last council meeting, doing it at the council meeting. And so we want to make sure that all of council knows what's being discussed, and that that's open, and the recording does that. But it shouldn't preclude somebody from being able to be there if they, if they so desire. So I do think that it's a little easier for the leadership to go ahead and have a meeting during the week, and I don't want to take that away. And obviously, the open meetings law doesn't take it away either, because you only need 24 hours to go ahead. Even if you changed it from Tuesday to Wednesday, you could still notice it and do all your stuff. So, but I do think it's just as important, because we want to make sure that other council members, that's what started this whole thing, and not that the public isn't important, that's equal, I wasn't trying to minimize that, but it was the fact that there was another council member there that made it public. And so if we could just keep that in mind, too, it's not just the public.
Councilmember Russell?
I think at some point, when the new mayor is elected, and that we'll have a more set time, is that correct?
I would hope so.
And so if it was notice-posted, I mean, if it's open to the public, not probably that many people are going to come. I mean, I don't look for that to happen. And even if another council member comes, the other council member shouldn't be speaking at all, but I actually don't think it should be an issue with, I mean, we're going to record it anyway. That was the suggestion, right?
Agreed.
And, and so once it's notice-posted, I, I think you're probably going to find that nobody is going to show up.
Like I opened a can of worms, and I kind of probably wish I wouldn't have it at this hour at this point. But, you know, again, I'm hearing two members suggest they prefer notice-post. I'm preferring not. You know, again, does anybody want to weigh in on this? Does anybody have any strong feelings on this? Councilmember Questa?
I probably shouldn't. This seems to come up a lot.
We've discussed it, we beat this horse pretty good, yeah.
It seems to me that we do need to get some policies in place where we're not revisiting, 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 and all of that. But I'm looking forward to that set date time, set procedure of how this gets done.
Yep. All right, so if it's no burden on staff, I'm going to suggest, let's just go ahead and notice-post Wednesday at 4:00, and then figure this out for the next week.
Sure. We can do that. I think, as I recall from the last discussion, we did decide that we were going to record, but...
That we weren't going to notice-post.
That we weren't going to notice-post.
That was the previous council, that's why I was trying to get some consensus on this issue.
Yeah, administrative staff-type meeting with, with the two electeds, and...
I agree.
Even though a third might show up, I think we heard from the attorney that it really wasn't a meeting, because they weren't participating, they were, they were observing the meeting. But listen, staff wants to be flexible, we will do what the council says, but I agree with Councilmember Questa that we need some hard and fast rules on this going forward.
No question. Needless to say, I feel like, you know, we spent way too much time discussing this issue, and, yeah, fair enough. Anybody else with, on that issue? That's all I had. We were on manager, is that right?
Yeah, I didn't have anything else other than the 18th.
It was him.
Yeah, sorry.
He's the one that started them.
City attorney, yeah. Open this can, where I think I feel like I brought us down that path, sorry. City attorney.
So you've all, you're all going to be incredibly sick of hearing about the draft policy and procedure manual that I've brought up several times. But the focus of the meeting, when this, when we bring this forward to discuss, is to actually make it a policy manual, much like other cities have, with specific policies. And some of the frustrations that I think the previous council, and even already this new council, have experienced, is that there aren't existing policies. For example, what do you do when a council member wants to resign? The city council doesn't own you. If you choose to resign, you get to, but there's nothing in any of the rules or policies or procedures. And people kept coming back to me and wanting me to make the rules, and like Council Barrentine said, my job is to tell you what there is, but I don't have to make up extra, and, and that's a difficult position to be in. So I'm looking forward to this discussion about the policy manual. I, as I said, I pulled procedure out. Mr. Widener, Bob Widener, who will be coming and doing the presentation for you, he's actually the gentleman who wrote Bob's Rules of Procedure that I've handed out to you and would like for you to consider adopting, because Bob's Rules is written for a municipal body in Colorado. Whereas Robert's Rules is about 1,000 pages long and is just not workable. So the nice thing about meeting with him is he can talk to you about the Bob's Rules and how that will give you, or I feel it'll give you a little bit more control over the procedure of the meeting. The other thing that he's going to be able to talk to you about is different policies